...try to do on some of our other applications tonight. We'll run a meeting until about 9:30, 9:45, take a look at the clock, take a look at where we are, and try to make a decision on whether or not we should keep going, or adjourn the meeting around 10:00 and pick a date for the next meeting. So that's our general plan tonight. We'll take a break in the middle, and with that, I think we can get started.
Okay. And Mr. Chairman, can I address some administrative items, just to make our record clear? Number one, as you've indicated, this is a special meeting. So in accordance with New Jersey law, certain things had to be done, and I'm here to say those things were done. So that's good. So let's just put into the record what I need, what I'm saying. Under the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this meeting had to be printed in the borough's two official newspapers. So as B2, B for board, is going to be the affidavit from the Coast Star confirming that notice of this application was presented. And prior to it being, I compared the notice prior, prior to sending it in, I sent it to all three attorneys to make sure that there were no issues, so there weren't any issues that I was aware of. And B3 will be the affidavit from the Asprey Park Press confirming that the special meeting notice was printed on or about March 8, 2019. On top of that, notice has to be filed with the borough clerk. So here, we're very fortunate that the board secretary is the borough clerk, so he can file it himself, so that was pretty easily done. And the notice had to be posted where similar notices at Town Hall are posted, and that was completed. And even though it's not technically required, notice was printed on, or posted on the borough's website, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So it would be my humble opinion that this is a lawfully convened special meeting. Always important to say that for the record. And glad to see that there's so many people here. That's encouraging. Number two, we have seven members here tonight, three, four, five, six, seven, and April, as I understand it, all seven members are eligible to participate and vote.
Yes.
Okay. So that's another awesome item. And the other thing is, just as a reminder, because there are some absent board members who may have to listen in the future if there's not a vote tonight, and because there may be litigation, and there may be a stenographer who has to print this, type these, the transcripts, it is important that we speak one at a time, and that there not be any unsolicited comments from the audience without being recognized, only because, not that we don't want the comments, not that we don't appreciate the comments, but there's a time for them, a place for them. And if you're not being near the microphone, or it's not being picked up, or being garbled with something that the board member says, or one of the attorneys, it doesn't come out, and it loses all its cluster, and then the judge, when he or she is reading the transcript, does not get to read that great comment, while they read is inaudible, or multiple people are talking, and it loses its effectiveness. So, that having been said, I think our borough engineer is here. Jerry? Jerry here?
Yes.
Hi, Jerry. Why don't we swear you in, just officially welcome you to the party. Jerry, you're the borough engineer. Do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide, to the extent you provide any, will be the truth, the best you know, as to help you guide?
I do.
Okay, thank you. And then, Mr. Chairman, I have a sort of a prepared text to read from, if that's okay, dealing with one of the administrative issues that was addressed at the last meeting. Please. Okay. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna read this quickly, for obvious reasons. So you will recall, at the last hearing on this down-to-earth construction matter, testimony was presented by Theodore Lamisella, the appraiser and assessor. In conjunction therewith, there were certain legal arguments raised as to the relevancy or admissibility of this testimony. I was essentially, as the board attorney, asked to make a legal determination on that issue. In retrospect, one can argue that my response was either very intelligent, and very deliberative, and very cautious, or one could probably argue that my decision was just wimpy. Because I basically said, based upon the novelty and complexity of the application, and the zeal with which the application was being presented, and supported, and objected to, I thought it might be appropriate to have the attorneys legally brief the issue. So towards the end, the conclusion of the last hearing, we scheduled a timeframe for when legal briefs would need to be submitted, by the applicant's representative, the supporting attorney, the objecting attorney, et cetera. And my on-the-record recommendation were memorialized in a letter that I sent to the parties of record of the attorneys dated March 5, 2019, and we're gonna mark that as B4. In response, I received a bunch of material that I'd like to mark into the record. So we had the letter brief of Bill Shipers, dated March 29, 2019, and I think we're gonna start that off as A for applicant, A23. And then we had the letter brief of Tim Middleton, dated April 3, 2019. I'm gonna mark that PS, P for public, S supporter, Middleton 1. So PS Middleton 1, that's his brief. We had the letter brief of Rick Brodsky, dated May, sorry, dated April 4, 2019. I'm gonna mark that as O Brodsky 1. And then we had a reply brief. So lawyers write briefs, they write reply briefs. So we had the reply brief of Bill Shipers, dated April 8, 2019. We're going to mark that as A24. And then we had a reply brief of Tim Middleton, dated May 9, 2019. So we're gonna mark that PS Middleton 2. So initially, I want to reiterate that the preparation of these legal briefs in the midst of a zoning board hearing would not typically be a normal situation. However, given the nature of the proceedings, the possibility and likelihood of litigation, and given the importance of the matter, I thought it was appropriate to be able to more formally review these legal briefs, and I appreciate the willingness of the board members, and the attorneys, and the public to engage and indulge my proposal. So to begin with, it is often said that in the context of a zoning board case, a zoning board must act in a quasi-judicial capacity. And that phrase means different things to different people, but in essence, it means that in our deliberative process, we as members and representatives of the zoning board, sort of have to act like a court or a judge, and determine whether an application should be approved or denied, et cetera. Clearly, as zoning board members and representatives, we have to be fair, unbiased, impartial, and just. We need to listen to, be respectful of, and properly analyze any and all submitted testimony information. Now, for the record, the good thing is, that that is what we here at Damar have done thus far in this proceeding, and in connection with this hearing, and for the record, is what we do in every single hearing. So in any event, I guess my request to have these, receive and review these legal briefs sort of jives with the need to sort of, you know, reaffirming our quasi-judicial capacity in which we operate. I want to congratulate the attorneys for their briefs. In all seriousness, the various briefs were articulate, they were persuasive, they were well-written, and they were informative. I reviewed the cases cited, and I even did my own research, all reflective of, and with the deference to, the importance of the legal issues at hand, and the importance of the board decision, and the importance to all the individuals who are in this room tonight, either objecting to or supporting the application, and all the individuals who have retained attorneys. If you care enough to retain attorney, and you care enough to retain witnesses, and you're paying money, you obviously, you know, you feel important about the information, and I think we need to reflect that, and we do. The exact readings of the cited cases can be, and sometimes are, confusing. As is abundantly clear from the review of the briefs, some cases, sometimes they'll say, or hold, or suggest that the concept of X is acceptable, and then they'll say, "But otherwise," see these other cases where the concept of X is not acceptable. And I certainly do not envy the role that a judge must typically play in similar situations when he or she has to review competing briefs. So in summary, the arguments presented by the attorney seem to include the following. Now, this is important. I'm just giving a very, very brief summation of their arguments, and my very brief summation is in no way intended to be a substitute for the information that they provided at length in their briefs. So this is just my summary. Mr. Shipers, in his March 29, 2019 brief, made a couple of points, and I'm just gonna highlight some of them. And I'm just mostly reading directly, or pretty much directly, from their briefs. He says, "A, it is unequivocal that expert testimony may be used to prove the detrimental effects or lack thereof on neighboring property or values." He also says that Mr. Lamisella, the appraiser slash assessor who testified, was called to establish several principles. Foremost, for a proposed development, or redevelopment to be possible, it must be economically feasible, or the redevelopment project will not occur. He also says that Mr. Lamisella was also offered to give an expert opinion regarding the financial impact on the surrounding properties in the event that redevelopment was approved. So next, we go to the brief of Tim Middleton. Among other things, it said, "Mr. Lamisella concluded that the development of the property as a single-family lot, and/or as five townhouses, was not economically feasible. This testimony is certainly relevant to this proceeding, and should not be confused with a lot of cases which hold that the property owner is not entitled to the most profitable use of the property." Mr. Middleton also argued, "Mr. Lamisella's argument is more nuanced than the profitability argument. The board is confronted with a binary choice, continued use of the property as a 34-room deferred maintenance boarding house, which is an eyesore, or the permission of six new luxury townhouses." Now we go to Mr. Brodsky's April 4, 2009 brief. He says, "Included in the analysis of Mr. Lamisella was his conclusion that it would be infeasible to develop a property as a permitted use, single-family residential. For the reasons discussed herein, the board cannot and should not consider the economic feasibility testimony offered by Mr. Lamisella in the context of determining whether the significant use variance should be granted. In other words, the board should not take into account Mr. Lamisella's testimony regarding the economic feasibility of the multi-family six-townhouse project, since the property certainly can be developed as a permitted use." Another point that he makes is, clearly, the subject property can be developed as a permitted use. And he also, Mr. Brodsky adds, "Under certain cited case law, the testimony of Mr. Lamisella concerning economic feasibility is not relevant to the board's consideration of whether the granting of the significant use variance is justified. In the context of the subject application, the board cannot rely upon economic feasibility to support the grant of the requested use variance, particularly as a special reason under either the Medici case or the Eagle slash Alco case. That is, the grant of a use variance based upon a finding that multi-family six-townhomes, as presented, is the only economically feasible use of the subject property as own, would be a misapplication of the law. Accordingly, Mr. Brodsky submits, that the board must disregard Mr. Lamisella's testimony on economic feasibility." Now we get into the reply briefs. Mr. Shiper's reply brief dated April 9 provides in part and part, and I'm not quoting all the legal citations, because then we'd hear for more hours, but Mr. Shiper's responsive brief says, "A, the objector's legal brief is insufficient. Under undue hardship in the form of economic inutility, has been acknowledged to constitute a special reason to support a use variance." He goes on to say, "The objector's argument is easily reduced to the following. This board should not consider the applicant's expert, because they happen to disagree with him. That is plainly not the standard, and the objector's unsupported argument must be disregarded by the board." He also adds, "The law is clear that experts can be used to provide specialized knowledge to assist the board, and the board is free to accept or reject the opinion of an expert, but the board may not unreasonably reject the opinion of an expert based upon unfounded allegations or unsubstantiated beliefs." Finally, we get to the reply brief of Tim Middleton, dated April 9, 2019, and he says, "In the Medici case, the Supreme Court specifically held that economic inutility is a special reason to support a use variance." So clearly, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, that was good stuff. That was good stuff presented by my friends and colleagues, who are officially involved in this case. In the interest of time, I respectfully submit that there is no need for any on-the-record supplementation of these legal briefs. Now, the reason, one reason I say that is because all the legal briefs were provided to the board members well in advance. If you obviously have any questions, you can certainly ask the board members, the attorneys. So, where do we go from here? Before I give any recommended legal course of action on this issue, I wanted to just talk about some basic, some other basic truths of the land use world in New Jersey. Some truths which we essentially discuss, and reference, and acknowledge, and incorporate on every single application that we adjudicate, but the truths are applicable, the zoning truths are applicable herein, and they might be worth reciting, as the same have a bit of an impact on the ultimate recommendation I'm gonna, I'm gonna make. That is, the basic zoning truths, I just wanna recite them real quickly, in no particular order. One, as is always the case, in our context of land use board applications, formal rules of evidence do not apply. This is not a murder trial, and we don't have to deal with the technical, precise rules of evidence. That notwithstanding, basic rules of evidence do apply. Relevancy, hearsay, all those, all those great things. Again, in the land use process, there is no quote "correct ray" or "right way" that one particular attorney can present his or her case. It's different strokes for different folks. While most attorneys typically follow a general format, there's no obligation to do so, and the way I would personally choose to present a case may not be the way that some of the attorneys here, and vice versa, and that doesn't mean my method, or my procedure, or my way is better, or worse, and vice versa. Likewise, the notion that some board members might prefer, or the way we're used to seeing cases presented in a certain way, really has no bearing on that situation. Three, at the end of the day, or more precisely, at the end of the public hearing process, we as a board have to know, and the applicant's representatives have to know, the objectors' representatives have to know, and the public has to know, that you all, as a board, properly analyzed the facts, the law, and legal standards in adjudicating your decision. Next up, and this was referenced in some of the briefs, the ultimate board decision, whether it's an approval or denial, needs to be based upon the testimony and evidence presented during this public hearing process, and within reason, based upon your individual life experiences as Belmar citizens and residents. Clearly, you all need to base your decision based upon the professional testimony presented, which information is subject to cross-examination, subject to questions from board members, and subject to questions from the public. Likewise, the law recognizes that you all, as the intelligent citizens that you are, you do not need to rely on professional witnesses to tell you such basic things as XYZ road floods, or parking near the beach is intense or problematic in the summer months. Those are things that we know. Next, under New Jersey law, within reason, we cannot put a timeframe on how long the applicant's case is, or how long the objector's case is, or how many people from the public want to ask questions and/or make comments. However, clearly, the law allows us to not have to be unnecessarily exposed to repetitive testimony, or combative testimony, or the like. And I also, I point out that, as I pointed out, you all are volunteer members, and to the extent possible, and within reason, you want to move things along. Next, assuming we proceed with all procedural and substantive norms, the decision of the board, whatever decision you make, will ultimately be subject to a presumption of validity unless the court finds that your decision was arbitrary, capricious, or unreasonable. That concept means a whole bunch of things to different people, but in the context of a litigation case, generally, the judge, the court, if they're reviewing this, not supposed to substitute his or her judgment for the decision you all make. Rather, generally speaking, the court is supposed to defer to the reasonable wisdom and judgment of this collective board, which is made up of residents and stewards of the Belmar community, unless the hearing process, the deliberative process, the adopted resolution, or any of these combinations are arbitrary, capricious, and/or unreasonable. And that is all the more reason why we have to be particularly sensitive to ensuring that all points of view are presented. Let's see. At the risk of having a protracted, or any more protracted hearing, or a series of hearings, we as a board, generally speaking, and within reason, have to let this hearing process unfold in accordance with the so-called traditional norms. And it would be my respectful opinion that we sort of have to allow the attorneys and the witnesses to present their cases, to present their arguments, within reason. And again, as we said before, my fear is that if we do not let an individual witness freely testify within reason, or if we do not allow an attorney within reason to present his or her case, and that attorney experiences what is perceived to be an adverse decision, obviously, there could be litigation, and in those circumstances, the offended aggrieved party is going to say, no doubt, that the decision was arbitrary, capricious, and unreasonable, because it was arbitrary, capricious, and unreasonable for the board not to allow their person to testify, or not to allow their argument to be considered. That offended attorney will likely argue that had certain testimony information been presented, had certain people been allowed to testify, it would have been meaningful, it would have been meaningful to the board, it would have changed the board's decision. And those issues, once presented to a judge, will be, upon the judge, quite taxing and problematic. And specifically, in my opinion, faced with such a scenario, I can imagine that a judge is gonna ask himself or herself, "Hey, look, are those arguments that the defendant's attorney is making, or the offended attorney is making, are they accurate? Was the information that they wanted to present relevant? Was that information that they wanted to present important? Should the board have considered that information? Would that information have affected or impacted the board's decision? Was it reversible error for the board not to consider that information? And should this matter be remanded to the court, so that the information can be properly considered?" And those are biting words, and remanded, that means come back to hear it again. So additionally, I can imagine, in the context of that litigation, the reviewing court judge is simply gonna look into the eyes of the board attorney and say, "How come you didn't let the attorney make his case? Why not?" So many times within reason, board attorneys simply do not want to have to deal with that type of legal drama, that type of risk, and thus, many times, within reason. I've noticed I'm saying "within reason" 25 times tonight for a good reason, but board attorneys will find it prudent to allow reasonable arguments and testimony to be presented. Next up, real briefly, and then we're gonna get back to the, in the context of this case, it will be, it will be possible that you're gonna hear testimony from qualified individuals, qualified professionals, which appear to contradict each other. For instance, one duly-qualified professional planner might find that approval of this application is consistent with the character of development of the neighborhood, consistent with the master plan, and the planner might also find that approval of the application will not have any detrimental impact on the community or his own plan. Likewise, it is equally plausible that another equally-qualified planner could testify in a complete opposite fashion. That other planner might testify that approval of this very same application is not consistent with the character of development in the neighborhood, that approval of that same application is not consistent with the master plan, and that approval of that same application will have detrimental impact on the surrounding community's own plan. New Jersey case law is aware that these situations happen, and that it's not unusual for this scenario to unfold. And so importantly, New Jersey case law provides that when faced with competing or opposite professional testimony, board members can, within reason, discount a portion of certain information presented. Obviously, we have not heard the objector's direct case yet, and thus, it would be premature to comment on any further nature and extent of potentially conflicting testimony, but since we're sort of having this midterm recap exam on land use issues, I'd probably leave that in. So, now where do we go? We go to, where do we go tonight? The question becomes, what do we do tonight with this testimony from Mr. Lamisella? So as is overwhelmingly evident, litigation associated with this hearing process is a distinct possibility, but as I indicated, the good thing is, we as the Belmar zoning board always act, and deliberate, and conduct hearings, and put statements on the record, open witnesses up to cross-examination, entertain comments from the public, and we prepare resolutions as if there's going to be litigation. Not every board does that. That's just one of the reasons why I'm truly honored to serve as the zoning board attorney. So it's my belief that we, what we are experiencing in this hearing process tonight essentially represents our standard protocol, clearly hamped up from the normal hearing process, but not too far. Additionally, for members of the public who might be experiencing this zoning board process for the first time, I want to reiterate that point. The board members who are sitting up here on the dais, and incidentally, who are volunteers, go through this fairly intense and fairly agonizing process every single month on every single application, and I truly applaud the board members for their commitment to their borough of Belmar, and their commitment to their job. So anyway, back to this issue before us with Mr. Lamisella. Some of the guiding principles seem to include the following, and I'm quoting this from the Land Use Administration COGS book. It says, "Per the Medici case, the New Jersey Supreme Court case from 1987, proof that the property is not reasonably adapted to a conforming use can satisfy the requirement of special reasons if it will result in economic inutility." Another case I want to cite, Spawton Shop versus Springfield. That was a New Jersey Supreme Court case from 2000, and it says, "In that case, the court, indiceth," and I don't know if that just means in commentary or in footnotes, "reaffirmed the Medici case that we just said, holding that where undue hardship exists because the property for which the use variance is sought cannot reasonably adapt it to a conforming use, such a showing can in support, grant of a variance." Third case, Charlie Brown of Chatham versus Board of Adjustment. And I don't have the citations here on that one, but it held that the inability of an applicant to make the most profitable use of his or her property does not constitute a hardship or economic inutility. So based upon these laws that were cited, based upon the arguments of counsel which were articulately presented in their briefs, I believe, within reason, we need to allow the testimony of Mr. Lamisella to be considered. Again, within reason. I think the potential problems of not allowing an applicant to present testimony within reason could prove problematic for a reviewing court. Now importantly, just because it is my legal opinion that we need to allow the argument to be considered, that does not mean that any of you as board members have to buy into Mr. Lamisella's argument. It does not mean you have to agree with Mr. Lamisella's testimony. It does not mean you have to accept Mr. Lamisella's testimony, nor does it mean you have to reject his testimony, or you have to discredit. Likewise, the testimony as presented by Mr. Lamisella may not have a material impact on you at all, under the circumstances, you may or may not be moved, or persuaded, or impacted by the testimony of Mr. Lamisella. Importantly, the testimony of Mr. Lamisella has been, or will be, or will continue to be, subject to questions from board members, and subject to cross-examination from the objecting attorney, and subject to questions and comments from the public. I respectfully submit that the testimony and arguments of Mr. Lamisella have already been presented, and for the previously explained reasons, we should allow the same to be considered. Quite frankly, I think it would be too risky, from a litigation standpoint, to not allow the arguments of the applicant's witness to be considered within reason. However, and this is a big however, you as board members need to give the testimony of Mr. Lamisella the weight and deference you all think it deserves. Some members, as indicated, may have been moved by the testimony, and will give it much deference. Some board members may not have been moved by that testimony, and those board members will not give it a lot of weight deference. The information is for you to decide. Likewise, Mr. Brodsky, an experienced and seasoned land use attorney, as the objecting attorney, has had, and presumably will have, the opportunity to continue, to question and cross-examine Mr. Lamisella, and if you will, attempt to poke holes in some of his arguments. Additionally, Mr. Brodsky, if he chooses, will also have the opportunity to bring his own real estate appraiser slash economic analysis to testify as well. And clearly, if any such testimony is presented, that witness can be subject to further cross-examination by Mr. Shiper, Mr. Middleton, the board members, and members of the public. So, conclusion, I would respectfully suggest that our democratic hearing process is only strengthened by exposure to as many witnesses and viewpoints as possible, within reason. Whether you all agree with the testimony of Mr. Lamisella, or you disagree with the testimony of Mr. Lamisella, you accept it, or reject it, or some combination thereof, as a matter of law, I would suggest that we allow the testimony to be considered, with the knowledge and understanding that you all, as board members, will ultimately determine how much weight, how much credence you want to give to the evidence after all the testimony and evidence has been presented. I respectfully submit that, noting the objections presented, we let the testimony in, ultimately knowing that board members will ultimately assign it the deference and weight that it deserves, or does not deserve. And some of the more provocative questions, at least in my mind, that some of you might be considering and asking yourself, would include such things are, "Why are X number of units proposed? Is this site particularly suited for X units? Can the property be developed for a conforming use? Can the property be developed for a conforming, or at least a more conforming use than what's proposed? If the board accepts the applicant's arguments supporting the construction of X number of units at the site, do those arguments, from a legal and planning perspective, do they still hold true if it's X minus one unit, X minus two units, et cetera? Is it feasible to develop the property as a conforming use?" And then, on top of that, and this is really the conclusion, all our other standards that we've always employed in evaluating these applications. Does the application promote public health, safety, morals, and general welfare? Does the application provide adequate light, air, and open space? Does the application create an appropriate population density, which will contribute to the well-being of persons, neighborhoods, and communities? Does the application provide a sufficient amount of space in an appropriate location for these residential uses? Will the approval of the application promote the free flow of traffic? Will the approval promote a desired visual environment? Can the application be granted without causing substantial detriment to the public good? Why are we not? Does this application, as presented, represent a better overall zoning alternative for the borough of Belmar? What will be the impact on the community? Are there any unique topographical or physical features or qualities associated with the site which warrant or justify the approval? Do the benefits outweigh the detriments? Would this proposal fit in with the neighborhood, will it not fit in with the neighborhood? What's the existing use of the site? The impacts are the same, the overall impacts of the proposed use? Will it be aesthetically appealing? Is there enough room to accommodate everything, garbage, parking, and all those things? And a lot of other similar questions. So, I apologize for the length. I wanted to make a record, I want to make the record clear. If there is any litigation, I want the judge to know that I took it seriously, that you all took it seriously, that the attorneys, and the objecting attorneys, all took it seriously. all took it seriously, that the attorneys and the objecting attorneys all took it seriously. So based upon that, I would suggest that we allow the testimony to be in, and that we attribute the weight ultimately that you deem appropriate and necessary. And, Mr. Chairman, unless there's any questions, we move on.
Can I ask you a question?
Okay, okay. Let's start with Mr. Washington first.
Let me see if I...the way I see it is that we're being given a binary choice. The idea of...I'm questioning this.
Sure.
Am I right in feeling like this? The idea of the family, or you know, that's not what we're...that's not what the application's about. The application is, this application or not? Is that a binary? I mean, the rule we should include is...
At the end, yes. At the end of the hearing, you are going to be asked to vote on this application, and obviously, it has not been modified, but if the vote were to take place right now, and obviously not ready to, the application for you is six votes. So, you know, you can...
Six units.
Six units. The application, and that's the application that would be voted or denied. Now, sometimes throughout the process, we, you know, sometimes impose or talk about conditions, you know, and that may or may not come up. But again, I don't even think any of those topics should really come up until we started hearing the...from the objector's testimony. But yes, the application you ultimately vote on can only be the application that's presented. Maybe it'll be modified, but it's that the applicant submitted, submitted.
Thank you. Mr. Fallon.
Two things, Mr. Kennedy. One, following your glorious speech, how many people you think behind you are still awake?
Well, if my legal assistants have any credibility, probably none.
Second question is, what is the protocol for this evening? Are we Mr. Shipers, then the defense attorney, then the audience? I'm just curious to know where we come in.
The protocol is, well, it's your show, so basically, whatever you want. But as I understand it, I just met with the...I huddled with the attorneys beforehand. I believe that there is a slight continuation for the appraisal, because I think there was some type of economic report submitted, and we'll mark that in. Then Mr. Brodsky wanted to briefly cross-examine Mr. Lamasella on.
Right.
And then, as I understand it, Mr. Shiper's case will have been rested. And Tim Middleton previously was going to bring a planner. Remember, Tim is representing supporters.
Right. Is that still in case?
No. He has subsequently indicated that he will not be bringing a planner.
Okay.
So then the shift, the case shifts to Mr. Brodsky to bring his direct testimony, and I believe he has one or two witnesses who are his party, and he has a planner.
And they're here?
They're here. And then there is a public question for all the witnesses and public comment.
Public question from the audience.
I'm sorry, from the audience and public comment. And if there's no other witnesses, board deliberation and board vote.
Well, we haven't asked any questions.
I mean, and you can ask your questions at the same time, yes.
Probably would come in before the public. As usual.
That's what I'm thinking.
That's right.
Yes.
Shouldn't we get there tonight?
Yes.
Well, I'll ask Mr. Kennedy that question when we get there at quarter to ten, did we say, Mr. Chairman?
We're going to put our eye on the clock at quarter to ten, see where we go.
Okay.
All right. Was that the end of your question?
That's it for me.
Thank you. Mr. Fitzgerald.
Mr. Kennedy, thank you for the summary of the briefs. I really am asking or just questioning that in those briefs, and the topic of additional offers to the seller was brought up, and you wanted to bring it up in your summary, and I'm just curious why that was not mentioned or given, or us given guidance regarding the existence of this alternative.
You know what? That's a good question, and I affirmatively chose not to bring it up because I was just really, as I was telling you about, or giving information about the legality of should be accepted testimony or not. I don't have any information on that, and if there's going to be information, I would assume we're going to hear that, and we can hear that from either the applicant's witnesses or the objector's witnesses we can ask, because I don't think that there was...there certainly was an extensive amount of testimony on that, but I don't know what was factually accurate, so we might have to get that form of testimony.
Any other questions from the board? Excellent. All right, let's move forward. Mr. Shipers, we're going to bring it back to you, I believe, for the finalization of Mr. Lamasella.
That's Mr. Lamasella, right.
Yeah. And Bill?
I'm here, yes.
Why, it's coming up, I did want to thank Mr. Middleton for recognizing that his testimony, his planner's testimony was not going to add to Mr. Fallon's in any significant way. We appreciate your consideration of our time.
I thought that would be a big...
What kind of socks is my man that wore? What you wearing, bro?
Oh, Keith.
Your pants are too low. I can't see. He woke me up the last time.
You know, Bill, I'm sorry, in the midst of all my papers here, I believe you submitted a report for Mr. Lamasella, correct?
I submitted, as requested by yourself and by Mr. Brodsky, I provided the comparable sales information upon which Mr. Lamasella relied in his scapula.
Right. So I want to officially mark that into the record. We are up to April 4A. Or we have two. Okay, hold on. I'm going to say A25, and I just don't have this right here, but Bill, call it again, A25 is the...
A comparable sales data utilized by expert Lamasella.
Okay. And is there a date on that?
On my left.
On the comparable sales data, or was it just...
That was data provided by Mr. Lamasella.
I thought I marked that as A23, is that right? Or was that just your cover?
No, that was a made brief. Mr. Lamasella utilized...
Date of January 3rd.
He utilized comparable sales, and I'm sure that's what it'll be crossed upon.
Okay, so we're going to...
This conclusion that testified before the board.
We're going to mark it as A25.
After counsel request to that, you asked me to provide it. You provide it.
So that's marked as A25. Okay, thank you. So now, just for the record, your name, sir?
Theodore J. Lamasola Jr.
And you recognize that you were previously sworn, and you recognize that you're still under oath?
I do.
Okay. Good evening and welcome back.
Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Rick Brodsky, on behalf of the two adjacent neighbors, apologize in advance for losing my voice a little or coming down with something, but I'm going to be pretty brief, I believe, with Mr. Lamasella, so we can move on to our direct case. So, good evening, Mr. Lamasella. Just picking up on your testimony from last...from last time, I'm going to have a couple of questions for you, and also with respect to...and also with respect to the report or documents that you submitted, or that Mr. Shiper submitted, that you prepared the content of. Is that correct?
That's right.
Okay. So the first question I have is, just curious, I see your report starts on page 43, and I was just wondering what happened to pages 1 through 42?
Pages 1 through 42 are the first part of my report leading up to the comparable sales.
And you...did you intend to submit that, or you didn't submit it?
No. Objection to the form, meaning...
Be produced.
Produced what was requested to be produced. We were not submitting the formal report. Have you submitted this testimony?
I just wanted to know what was in pages 1 through 42. If it leads up to the information that you submitted, probably should be something that should be submitted and we'd be entitled to take a look at. Maybe it'll tell me what it is, and we'll decide, is it relevant?
Did Mr. Steck prepare a report for you, and I can have a benefit of that report before I cross it?
Well, let's answer my question first. Mr. Steck did not prepare a report, he prepared a testimony outline. But I just want to know what the content was, and whether we should all see it or Also, pages 61 through 65 were also not included.
Far away. The first part of the report first lays out the subject property. I did inspection, photos, triage of full characteristics, if you're probably aware of that from the testimony. Beyond that, it describes the county, neighborhood, again, somebody probably familiar with, and then it talks about what the report is going to articulate, which I testified to, the feasibility of the project, the highest estimates of the project, and the impact on the surrounding properties. And that leads up to page 41, which is first describing the comparable sales to trade as a property as is currently situated as a rooming house.
Page 41. Okay, we didn't get that either. We started at 43. So what was it that was on 41 and 42?
Page 41 describes the sales comparison approach, which is one of the approaches to value in present terminology. And page 42 describes the highest investment use analysis that we're doing in the report. In this case, we're starting with analyzing the value as currently constituted as a rooming house. And then on page 43, we begin with comparable sale number one, a comparable rooming house sale.
Okay, so I mean, is your testimony that there was nothing in pages 1 through 42 that was important, or that would be relevant to your conclusions, or...
I don't think so at all, I think I said.
Oh, good. If it was important...
The strategy of the report is going to lay out, and...
Just curious, that line, why it wasn't submitted, if it was important?
Objection to the form, that was not what the request was when we shared that specifically. We have to refer to the transcripts. We have them. The discussion was, at the request of Mr. Brodsky, will the comparable sales information be produced that we utilize in your testimony? We debated it, we talked about it, and similarly, had no objection to it, had provided it a long time ago. Mr. Brodsky has had it. He hasn't written any letters to us saying, "I want the whole report," or "You didn't give me everything. You didn't give me what I asked for." This is crossed, so let's move on.
You know what? If I, just referring to B4, which was my letter from March of 2019 to Mr. Shipers, Rick Brodsky, and Mr. Middleton, it said, hey, you know, you burnt all the things about the briefing schedule that I were going to adhere to, and it said, "Please also allow the within letter to confirm that at least 10 days prior to the continued hearing date, Mr. Shipers will also submit comparable property information referenced in the February 28, 2019 testimony of the applicant's appraiser. Further, on the record discussion, Mr. Shipers may also submit other desired information as well to ease the administration's administrative burden associated with the work process. I would ask that requested information be ten copied to the work secretary and one each of the attorneys." So that was at least, I don't think there was any information about, don't submit pages 1 through 42, but I think that was the request, at least as I recall, was for the comparable property information.
And, Mr. Kennedy, that letter was not for your, any report that you might have prepared in preparation for testimony? It was comparable sales to be produced. Is that correct?
I...I mean, I asked...
You did not ask for his whole report.
I asked for, yeah, comparable, yes, I would agree with that.
And we produced it, correct? And there was no objection by you or Mr. Brodsky as to the extent, more information, bounce of the report, that's largely for the rest of it, let's take a whole other day so Mr. Brodsky could say, "I want a whole other day to review a report that wasn't..."
But in fairness, I think it's, if you see it, and it's a fair question to ask. I mean, I never said, "Don't submit pages 1 through 42." I didn't know, but I think it's a fair question. I think the question has been answered, and I think we should move on.
Yeah, I was just trying to figure out what was in it.
Fair question.
So if, in those first forty-some odd pages, was there any information or any comparable sales or any conclusions that you drew with respect to the value of the subject property? If it were to be developed for its permitted use, which is a single-family residential home?
In pages 1 through 42? No.
Anywhere and anything that you've submitted?
Sorry, the question, what was I looking for?
Just asking if you opined, and with comparable sales or by whatever else may have been in those forty pages or anywhere else, as to the value, the market value of the subject property, if it were to be marketed and to be developed as, for its permitted use as a single-family residential home?
The only statement in...
You could just do, give me a yes or no if you'd like. Yes, if you have the value, let's hear it. If not, we'll move on.
It is not in those pages 1 through 42.
Okay, is it anywhere else?
It is.
Okay. So if you could show me where you have that in the existing report, that is, the value of the property to be developed, if it were to be developed as a single-family home, tell me where it was, and then what your conclusion was.
Sure. So, in the part of my testimony last time, that based on the zoning, and it would require a variance for one of the lots, it might be this other site could be developed into two single-family lots. My conclusion was...
No, sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but you definitely testified to that, and that's in the report. My question was, value of the land in its, if it were to be marketed and to be developed for its permitted use, which is a single, single-family residential home. Did you look at that?
Yes, it was eight hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Right.
And what page was that on?
Well, page 63 states...
63, you didn't give us. Sixty, you did not submit pages 61 through 65.
It wasn't a comparable sales page, it was an analysis page.
Okay, so I don't have it, I'm just asking you what it says.
So what it says, the conclusion, is that a single-family site at the, situated in the subject property would be worth eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars per site.
Eight, I'm sorry, eight hundred and twenty-five thousand?
Per site.
Well, there's only one site.
In my view, highest estimates, you could get two sites, and it would be worth one million six fifty, but in one site, you get one, so it's eight hundred and twenty-five.
Okay, that's your perspective of highest investment use, having nothing to do with applicable zoning law. Am I correct?
That's incorrect.
It's incorrect. Okay, so...
The likelihood, what's the likelihood that that second lot, we're going to receive the appropriate variances, as a credible expert, and that is what the standard is. My analysis was that would be very likely, and I find two sites at the one million six fifty. At one site, it's eight hundred and twenty-five.
Okay, so as a permitted use, your professional opinion is that this 15,000-square-foot residentially zoned lot, oceanfront, would be worth eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars?
Across the street.
Across the street from the ocean. Anything impeding the views between the ocean and the site, other than the park or the street?
I was just referring between properties on the beach, on the ocean, and properties across the street.
Fair enough. Eight... Eight twenty-five is your opinion.
That's correct.
And, but I'm just curious, why that wasn't submitted to the board?
I don't choose what to submit. I was here, the attorneys, you were trying to discuss it, and you agreed I wanted to submit.
Well, I didn't agree that, I wasn't interested in the value of the property as it exists, but so be it. Maybe there was a...
I don't think so at all.
Okay, maybe there was a miscommunication.
I object, Mr. Kennedy. I, in the spirit of moving this one, I ask Mr. Brodsky, ask questions and listen to answers as opposed to a lot of unnecessary thought.
It's hard to ask questions about information that I don't have, so I'm, and I'm just trying to figure out, maybe I missed it, you know, maybe...
The testimony that was given, you had months to review your transfers that you had, I think you're ready to stop.
I just want to make sure we're clear. You're saying a one-single-family unit house is worth eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars on the oceanfront?
The lot, one-site lot.
The lot. How much did we say that the six units were worth? Was that two million three hundred and eighty thousand? Is that right?
I think the testimony was two point five is the purchase price.
For six units? And one house is eight hundred and twenty-five thousand on the ocean?
One single-family lot.
Now, I'm sorry.
Maybe we can just let the cross go, and you'll get a chance to ask your question.
I didn't mean to. So I did find in the information that you did give, Mr. Lamisola, that you did opine as to the value of the property in its existing condition for its existing use as the seasonal rental. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And what was the value that you opined to with regard to the market value of the property today?
Two million three hundred and eighty thousand.
Okay.
I'm sorry, two million three hundred and eighty thousand.
Eighty?
Correct.
Thank you. And just two more questions. One is, am I correct that the assessed value for the property is two million one hundred thirty thousand six hundred dollars total?
That's correct. That is ninety-one percent for each year.
So what would that equate to in market value?
Two million three forty-one.
So the assessor here at Belmar values the property in its existing condition as attributed to it a market value of two million three hundred forty-one thousand.
That's correct.
Okay. And I noticed that in the assessment, and this is the, before applying the ratio, we can deal with that, the land component, right, let me step back, I'm sorry. So the assessment is comprised of two components, right? Land and improvement.
That's correct.
All right. So out of our two million one hundred and thirty thousand six hundred assessment, how much of that, what portion of that is allocated by the Belmar assessor to the improvement component?
The improvement component is assessed at three sixty-four two.
And that would mean that the land component is assessed at?
A million seven sixty-six four.
One million seven sixty-six four, yet your opinion of the value of that dirt is eight hundred and something thousand, is that correct?
No, that's not correct. My correct rate is a million six fifty.
I'm sorry?
A million six fifty.
For two lots?
On that lot, correct.
So are you suggesting that the assessor assumed in setting the assessment that this board would grant the property owner or an applicant the D variances and then the associated bulk variances that would be necessitated in order to subdivide the existing lot into two lots?
A, I have no idea what the assessor said. B, as a matter of law, taxpayer cannot challenge land or improvement of an assessment, only challenge the total. So regardless of what the breakdown is, that may have been not accurate, there's no way to appeal. They can only appeal the total number. The total number is in line with my view of market value. My guess is, I find why it was unchallenged, and I have no idea how the assessor brought this inclusion. I will say it's not that much different than my view.
Well, the land component certainly is.
No, I opine a million six fifty.
For two lots?
Two lots, correct.
Okay, and so when you are an assessor in Wall Township, correct?
That's correct.
And so when you assess properties, do you assess properties based on, strike that, when you assess properties in Wall or anywhere else that you are the assessor, do you make assumptions as to what variances you think might be granted in order to develop that property?
Yes, if they're likely, absolutely.
And you, and how do you conclude that they would be likely?
What's been done in the past.
What's been done in the past? Okay, and so for the subject property, you assumed it was likely that anyone coming into this board for variance, for the variances, the D and the C variances, to form this one lot, subdivide this one lot into two, your opinion as an appraiser and assessor is that as a matter of law, that's very likely?
I'm going to check this one question. I don't think there's, there's, assumed in the question is that D variance, or D variances would be requested if it was such a lot, but, no, I don't think we can assume that. It's a, I object to both of the foundations of the question.
Okay, hold on. You testified, I believe, that, if I recall correctly, that the development of this property with the six, the six proposed condominium units, with the D variances and bulk variances that are associated with that, would actually have an upward effect on the value of surrounding properties? Is that correct?
That's correct.
And would that apply, strike that, no, would that apply to the properties that are owned by my two clients directly adjacent to the subject property?
Yes.
So their property values, it's your opinion, would go up if the board grants these variances, the six residential condominium units are developed, and all of the variances that are sold or granted? That would increase their property value?
Asked and he answered. How is that question any different than the question?
Okay, I'm sorry. Well, I was wrong. Let me ask you this question. Would your opinion change, oh, strike that, what would be your opinion of the effect of the value, of the market value of my client's adjacent properties, if this property was developed for its permitted use as a single-family home?
Would be the effect of, would be the impact?
Yeah, would it be a positive impact, negative impact?
I think it would be, it would be a positive impact, as compared to how the property is currently constituted. However, I believe that, in my view, in my position as an appraiser, having six transactions in excess of a million dollars on the street really forms a market as opposed to one transaction of one single family. So I think the impact of the redevelopment would be greater than the impact of a single-family house, but in both, by removing the high-impact class four apartment property in various stages of repair, or plus with a new construction of either single-family or the six units, I think what would be positive, I think the current development for you would be more positive.
Okay, I have to follow up on that, because I may have lost you, it may be me. So just to be clear for the record, your testimony as an appraiser is that the market value of my client's properties, which, both of which sit within five feet of the, one of the two proposed buildings, the market value would be improved more than if the property were developed as a single-family residential?
That's correct.
Got it, okay. Did you mention anywhere in your report about economic inutility, which is what Mr. Kennedy spoke about for a while?
I don't think I used the phrase economic inutility.
Okay, okay. And last question, I just want to confirm that the subject property, would you say has value, whether it would be continued as the seasonal rental, as it exists today? Two point three million, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Would have value if it were to be developed as a single-family residential for its permitted use? Your testimony, eight hundred, probably be a good deal. And, and so there's no scenario that you can conceive of as an appraiser that would result in the subject property being valueless, having no market value? Is there any scenario under which that would take place?
A part of catastrophic unforeseen event?
No. Okay, thank you. No further questions.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Kennedy, procedurally, we're up to Mr. Brodsky. I guess, Mr. Kennedy, that's the end of your testimony?
That's it.
Mr. Milton, do you have any questions for the witness?
No, I don't.
Okay.
All right, to that, Craig, just direct to Mr. Brodsky.
Yes. Yes.
And now, do you need a place to sit up here?
Yeah, that would be great, I'm just trying to figure that out.
No problem. Do you mind sharing?
Share, share. Okay, so I kept my question down in very short in the interest of mine. I do want to call one of my clients now before I get to the rest of the planner, and that's Mr. Julio, just to, there were some, and I think Mr. Fitzgerald had asked about it, there were some questions raised, or information raised with regard to an offer that was or wasn't made with respect to the subject property, and I just want to set the record straight on that, and then we'll move right into Mr. Stek.
You want to sit here?
I can stand. We can have Mr. Julio sit.
Okay.
If you could just state your name for the record?
Julio.
And say your last name, please?
P U L E O.
And you swear that the information in testimony you're about to provide will be the truth of best of knowledge to help you guide?
Yes.
And just for the record, your address?
Ninety-nine First Ave, Belmar.
And you are one of the objectives, right?
Yes.
Okay, good evening.
Thanks, Mr. Julio, I'll call you Joe. Just real quick, in the context of the briefing on legal issues, there were some facts or questions raised with regard to an offer that was made by you to purchase the subject property, is that correct?
Correct.
And you felt compelled to address the board on that inasmuch as there was a number of inaccurate facts that were set forth in that, is that right?
Correct.
So if you would, what I'd like you to do is just walk the board through how the offer came about, starting back in, I think originally, the property was listed, and it was listed at a higher price than what was listed, what was being sold for now to the contract purchaser slash applicant. I guess it was originally listed at three point two million?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and then it went down to two point nine nine, then two point eight five?
Correct.
Okay, and then you were advised sometime in June of, was it two thousand and eighteen, that the seller had entered into a contract for two point five million?
Yes, that's correct.
And that was with the applicant who had intended to build six townhouses?
I object to the leading nature on, it's his business, you should ask him questions, and he would, should give the testimony, not Mr. Brodsky.
Okay, what happened next, Joe?
So they informed me they had a contract for two point five...
Sorry, meaning?
The purchasers. For two point five million.
Are these Joe or the seller?
I think they had a contract with the purchasers for two point five million.
Mr. Kennedy, same proposed objection, that he asked a question, he should let his witness answer the question.
That's correct.
The answer, objection over.
And then ask him other questions.
They advised that the property was under contract for two point five million with someone who was going to build six townhouses. I was shocked that the seller reduced the price because he had said the last price of two point eight five was firm. I said I was prepared to put in a backup order, offer, but the seller's girlfriend, who was also the realtor, became angry and asked why I hadn't made an offer before that. So I asked her to send the information on her attorney, which never came, so I dropped that. On October thirty-first, two thousand eighteen, which is the day after the first meeting, the seller texted me and said, "Today was supposed to be our closing. Builder is asking me to hang on another couple of months, which I don't want to do. You want to be the new owner of the White House, let's talk." We met on November fourth, at my house next door. I asked if there was any room in the price. He informed me there was not any room, he had to get two point five million. He left, and that was about all of the communication we had until March first. That was the day after the last meeting. I asked the seller if he was still down in Belmar, he texted back that he was driving to his dad's house up north. I called the seller on March third and asked if the contract that had expired on ten thirty was extended. He replied, "No, there is no contract, amended contract in place, and no deposit was received from purchaser." So as far as he was concerned, he could sell the property. I was surprised to hear this because I assumed they had extended the contract. I reminded him that they were planning on appealing, and it could take a long time. I asked him to consider a two point two five million dollar cash offer, no contingencies, close within thirty days. He said he would think about it, but probably not. I called back on March eleventh, asked if he thought about the offer, and he said if I was willing to close in thirty days, he would sell me the property for two point four billion. I said, "Fine." I said, "Let's have our attorneys contact each other and do a contract, as long as you're confident that you can get out of the old contract." Mr. Brodsky and the seller's attorney talked for a few days. The offer was put in writing and emailed on three twenty-one. They rejected the offer on three twenty-seven. I called seller to ask why he changed his mind, and he said he was advised by his attorney that although the contract had expired, the purchasers could possibly sue him. And that was about the end of our conversations. So that's how it transpired.
Okay.
A lot of this is in writing and texts.
Yeah, so...
We never, I never threatened, I never screamed, you know, like the brief said. We had very cordial conversations up till last week, and that's how it went.
And I'm just going to show you, actually, can we have this marked?
Yes, hold on one second.
What we're on to, we've got a few, right?
Do you just, before I mark it, can you show it to Mr. Kennedy?
Oh, sure, I have a comment.
Oh, you do?
Yeah.
Give me an extra copy for... Hold on, we're going to mark this in people up to, O, is this mine to mark or?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're going to mark this as O Brodsky two. What is O Brodsky two?
Okay, and so...
Do you have an extra copy, by the way?
I do.
Just so you can get more details.
What this exhibit is, is an email from my office that I was directed to send by Mr. Coolio.
And actually, you have another one. You may be a board member, Mr. Chairman. So, just for the record, this is an email chain?
It's an email chain, specifically referencing the first, the top email, the emails dated March 21st, 2019, which was sent by me to Kevin Bransley, the attorney for the seller, pursuant to his request to put it off for writing. Indeed, that's what that email says. And then I also have...
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
I'd ask for, normally if we were in court, I'd say maybe approach, but here's what is now a term. Mr. Brodsky, I assume the board now has this letter for Mr. Brodsky?
Yes.
So, Mr. Brodsky is presenting a document that he typed, or his secretary typed, and it says from Rick Brodsky to Kevin Bransley. And he's now injected himself into both the testimony and the email. And there are very specific words in this that candidly, I'm prepared now to cross-examine Mr. Brodsky on it because he's made himself a witness.
I have to make myself a witness. This issue was raised in Mr. Schaefer's brief. Mr. Schaefer's stated in the brief that my client was just, I forgot, gamesmanship, various other allegations, including, including the fact that culminating in his brief with the fact that a written offer was never submitted. And indeed, we just wanted to clear that for the record so the board is aware that my client was not engaging in any gamesmanship, but truly had an intention to purchase the offer. Do you have any questions for Mr. Coolio who certainly can ask?
Well, I think if we're going to stay away from slippery slopes, one, I don't think this, for what I could care less, can't do what it says, good, bad, or indifferent. I'd have a field day with it. But unless Mr. Brodsky wants to be a witness, I think we stick with what his witnesses that he puts on the stand testify to. The moment he starts offering, admitting documents that he authored to try to establish some sort of no gamesmanship or no interference by Mr. Coolio, he's a witness, and it's dangerous. And I think Mr. Kennedy should think long and hard before that's a road you want to go down. I think that's specifically prejudicial, detrimental, inappropriate to my client and...
And just in response, the only reason that my client felt compelled to come before the board and establish and prove to the board that indeed his offer was a serious offer was simply because the result of an allegation that was set forth in the briefs, which said he never made a true offer, never intended to purchase the property, never wanted a... That's all. The content of the email is irrelevant. I will agree with Mr. Schaefer. The purpose of submitting the email was simply just to, so you didn't have to take my client's word. That's all.
Well, for starters, the lawyer should have assisted, Mr. Kennedy, we should look at the latter. First, the brief of Brodsky, which is the first brief that broaches the topic of outside, if he was outside of this application, to try to poison this board that his client made some sort of offer, which is irrelevant to this application. Did not start with me, did not start with Mr. Middleton. The game chips started and the outside inadmissible play started with Mr. Brodsky, with his brief. Read the briefs. Myself and Middleton responded to it, and we responded to it with vigor because it shouldn't have been brought up in the first place, but we countered it. I was good to let it go, but if Mr. Brodsky wants to take it on, scrap it on, we're ready. But his testimony and this approach is prejudicial. He's trying to influence this board inappropriately by saying there are other offers out. So, I might be able to, what, bring other people in to my second. I would offer 2.3, 2.1, to what the appraiser says land value. That's not where this goes, and it's not what this application is. It's a binary application before this board.
And Mr. Kennedy, if I could address that, I agree with Mr. Schaefer's that the value of the property, if there are other offers, the value of this offer is not relevant concern for the board. The only reason that it came up was to just respond to allegations that the offer was never made by him.
Well, if it wasn't relevant, why was it in your brief? Why did you submit it to this board, try to poison this board that this fellow will make an offer, for whatever reason, and do whatever with this property? He might theoretically to make them think, well, maybe we should grant what is made, what is brought before the board by the applicant after three lengthy hearings. That is injected by the objectors to poison this board and make them think, other than they need to evaluate this application, clearly outside of case.
I disagree, and the sole purpose of bringing the testimony in was to respond to the allegations that Mr. Coolio's was other than upfront and trustworthy with respect to having submitted a hold. Of course, the sole purpose of this is done and established.
Thank you. I appreciate the objections are noted for the record, and Mr. Chairman...
And let me just question...
Hold on, hold on. I would suggest that you just move along.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. I think that's enough.
As I say, we're on the... Thank you, Mr. Chair. What I'd like to do now is to call Mr. Steck, our professional planner on behalf of the client.
And let me just, Tim Middleton, do you have any questions for the last witness?
No, I don't.
Thank you.
I have no question.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer.
Now, Peter, you have the exhibit...
I have this kind of handout and one for you to reproduce. Part of the handout.
Okay. Should we go ahead and mark those, Kevin?
Sure. Let's sit. Mr. Steck's sworn in first. We have him sworn in. Mr. Steck, good evening, and welcome to the Belmore Zilling Board. If you could just state your name?
Peter G. Steck, S.T.E.C.K.
Okay, Mr. Steck, good evening. Do you swear that the information you're about to provide will be the truth of best of your knowledge to help you die?
I do.
And for the record, you are testifying tonight in your capacity as?
A professional planner.
Okay. And Mr. Brodsky, he did have his credentials set forth so that the board members and Mr. Schaefer's and Mr. Middleton can ask any questions if they have any?
Of course. Mr. Steck, if you would, could you give the board the benefit of your background and experience as a licensed, as a professional planner here in the state of New Jersey?
Yes. By way of education, I have a bachelor's degree in civil engineering and a master's in city and regional planning. In terms of work experience, I was the planning director for the township of Montclair for just short of 10 years. I also worked as an associate with two different consulting firms, Malcolm Kessler Associates that was in Hackensack, and Alvin Gershon Associates that was in Trenton. For the last 20 years, I've been self-employed as a community planning consultant representing developers, municipalities, neighborhood groups. I'm a member of the League of Municipalities Land Use Law Drafting Committee. I've testified in approximately 170 municipalities in New Jersey and been accepted as an expert witness in Superior Court in, I believe, eight counties, as well as in the New Jersey tax court.
Thank you. Mr. Schaefer, do you or Mr. Middleton have any questions on the applicant, the witnesses' credentials?
I'll hold those for cross.
Okay. I'm sorry? No. Okay. Mr. Chairman, are the credentials acceptable?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Steck. Looking forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Steck, if you would, describe for the board what you were asked to do in connection with the application, which informs the subject matter of the hearing this evening, and what your findings were.
I was asked to review the application and to analyze the testimony that was provided by the applicant and to render an opinion about whether the statutory proofs have been met that would allow this board to approve the application. And as part of that, I looked at the property and the surrounding area on three different occasions. I went to the municipal offices to look at planning documents. I also, you know, drove the length of Ocean Avenue to get a sense of what's going on, and I also read one transcript, and I was at the last, I guess, three hearings wherein I listened to the, was present when the testimony was presented by the applicant's planner. And I was here earlier this evening to hear the supplemental testimony of the appraiser.
Great, and if you could go through your findings, just referencing any of the exhibits either previously marked in the prior hearings or any that you had.
Okay. I have a handout that might be helpful to the board.
Perfect, so let's go ahead and get that marked.
Hold on, I'm going to mark this as O. Brodsky 3. And what is O. Brodsky 3? Can you give me one more?
Yes. It is a five-page document, five sides, on two, three pages, that are numbered, or P. 1 through P. 5 in the upper right-hand corner. The front date on it is October 24th, 2018, but I have amended the last page, P. 5, which is dated April 9th, 2019, and it was prepared by me.
All right, and so what would I call this?
Planning analysis.
Anything else? Thank you.
And would you mark it?
O. Brodsky 3.
And I have copies for the board members.
Here, I'll bring them up. Peter, do you have any other exhibits that you'll be referring to?
The other exhibit is P., was just referenced as the fifth page of O. Brodsky 3. I simply blew up the two graphics that are on that page to a larger board and...
Ready for me to mark that?
Yeah, I think we should. It's a blow-up of P. 5, but...
So, it's O. Brodsky 4. And what am I calling this?
Enlarged P. 5 of exhibit P. 5 of O. 3.
P. 5 of O. 3.
And I'll just stick it on the table here because it's really more for the audience I just want to briefly describe what was in the handout, and then I'll refer to it in more detail.
And that's O. Brodsky 3?
Yes. And there are different panels that are numbered, so I'll refer to the numbers. But on the first page, there is a 2015 satellite photograph secured from the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection. It's 2015, and it's in infrared, so the grass shows up red. And I superimposed the zone that this is in, R. 75. There are a number of photographs taken of the subject property and the surrounding area, and they were taken by me on October 23rd of 2018, and I believe they all accurately depict the existing condition when I took them. So, at the bottom of the page is a view looking, you know, in a sense, from the ocean side toward the front of the subject property. The second page, P. 2, photographs, three and four show items that were in the file, and they're historic pictures from postcards of what this 100-year-old property looked like earlier in its life. What I wanted to emphasize is photo number three shows different height levels. As you can see, the portion of the building that's closest to the ocean has a higher roofline than the remaining portion, which at one time had a drive-through. Photograph 5 shows an October 23rd view from across Second Avenue. And again, you see the modifications that have occurred over time, but what I want to highlight is that the roofline is lower as you go west. And then you see one of my client's property, one of the two clients on the left-hand side there. Below that is a view of the property looking across River Avenue, and there, again emphasizing that there are two different, maybe a total of three different rooflines, but the tallest part of the property is the furthest away from the existing single-family homes. The next page has more of a perspective views, so P. 3, again photographs taken by me on October 23rd, numbers 7, 8, and 9, and there are different views emphasizing how the building fits into the other buildings and the character of the other buildings that have been built, which obviously are newer. The next page, P. 4, continues some views of the surrounding area. Number 10 shows the view looking across Second Avenue. Number 11 shows the view from the River Avenue frontage looking somewhat southeast, and you see a large, a single-family house there across Second Avenue. The bottom of the page has inserts 12 and 13. 12 is from the 2016 master plan where there's a reference to areas that were subject to flooding. The FEMA map secured from the internet is on 13, just emphasizing that this property is not in a designated flood hazard area. The final page, I'll spend some time on later, but let me just describe it. That's the one that was enlarged. The upper panel shows the footprint of the proposed six townhouses, and superposed on top of that in a pink color is the footprint of the existing dwelling. Below that is a diagram that shows the proposed development, and there are numbers in blue, 1 through 13, that reference the items of relief that are needed. And there actually is another one in that this is as proposing the density that exceeds the density permitted, and that's in the note on number 15 about that diagram. So, let me go back to the beginning to describe some of my observations before I get to First is to describe the subject property. As noted in the record, it's a little over 15,000 square feet. It has an older structure that is licensed as a hotel. It is a non- It is non-conform use, and as I mentioned, it is not in a flood hazard area. So there's no requirement that it be super-elevated in order to protect it from the designed flood vent. When the applicant's planner was discussing this, it was talk about how what the requirement would be if this were 34 single-family units, the parking that would be needed. I just want to emphasize that a use that is a seasonal hotel, and let's say of 34 rooms, I'll verify the number, is not the same as 34 single-family houses. And that makes it seem obvious. It is, 34 single-family houses have a bigger parking requirement. This is a seasonal hotel. It's been there for a number of years. And while it's been there, the area has grown up around it. There are evidence of new construction in the area. So what I'm going to jump the gun and say that there is no apparent detriment to the current use. That use has been there for a long time. It is used during the summer season. There's been new construction around it that is handsome and presumably expensive, and it hasn't shown any, in my opinion, any adverse impact on the surrounding area. The applicant wants to tear it down and start from scratch. And that means that any reference to existing non-conformies or non-conforming rights are removed. By tearing it down, it's not like the applicant is eating the four walls. By tearing it down, you get to start from scratch and apply the ordinance as it was intended to apply. I did look at the surrounding area, and that is, you know, fairly well depicted on the first page of O. Brodsky III. And in fact, your master plan had a map within it that documented existing conditions. This is your August 2016 reexamination report and update. And that--
August--
Excuse me?
August.
2016, master plan, excuse me, reexamination report and update. Both the reexamination report and a master plan update. And I'll talk about the master plan in a minute, but what I want to observe is that the planning board documented the number of non-single-family uses in the area. The governing body coached by the planning-- first of all, the planning board knew that there were multifamily uses in the area, and that's clear from looking at the plan. And it still recommended a single-family designation for this property. And indeed, the governing body did change, did retain the single-family R75 zone for this property, despite the fact that it knew that there were multifamily uses in the area. If you do drive, and I'm sure you're all intimately familiar with Ocean Avenue, and this property is very visible. It's across the street from a municipal park. That's open space that makes this property very visible. The applicant's planner characterized this, and the architect characterized the design as looking like two single-family houses. I would disagree that-- first of all, if you align yourself perfectly with the driveway between them, for that instant, if you're walking or driving, you would see two separate buildings. But any other, from any other angle, you're going to see townhouses. This is not going to look, in my opinion, anything like a single-family house. There are elements in the architecture, you understand, or doors and windows, but a building of this scale, building, two buildings of this scale, in my opinion, from, other than maybe one point of view on Ocean Avenue, is not going to appear anything close to a single-family house. Part of my analysis was to, you know, look at your master plan and the 2016 reexamination report and update. As the law says, starts a cycle from the prior reexamination report, which was in 2006. And so in reviewing what the planning board's policies were in 2006, the master plan said, among other things, that they want to consider a floor area ratio limit for residential areas, want to consider a limit on building coverage for residential properties. And it suggested that multifamily dwellings no longer be considered as a conditional use in the R75 zone, at least in this portion of the municipality. The reexamination report goes on to report, you know, what has happened since those recommendations that were done in 2006. And the reexamination report, and again, that's pretty recent, 2016, said, "We accomplished those purposes. We have an FAR, we have a building coverage, and multifamily use," which, in my opinion, this development is, "is no longer permitted in this part of the R75 zone." The master plan talked about, in the land use element of the master plan, and again, this is important, not only because it, number one, it supports the current zoning of R75 single-family zone, but also it's important because you've got to address the negative criteria. It substantially, doesn't substantially impair the zone plan and zoning ordinance. So the zone plan is the master plan. Well, this was recommended for a low-density residential area for zero to six units per acre. Now, it so happens that the R75 zone, if you take a standard lot, that's a density of 5.8 units an acre. The applicant is proposing 17.4 units an acre. That's three times the density. If you acknowledge that in the zoning ordinance, corner lots are supposed to be larger, not 7,500 square feet, but 9,000 square feet, that's a density of 4.8, it's units per acre. And so this is now more than three times what that density would be for corner lots. So the master plan is recent. It knew that there were multifamily uses in the area. It recommended, supported a single-family development, which at most, even with an interior lot, had a maximum density for single-family use of 5.8 units per acre. The property is zoned as recommended in the master plan. And I want to kind of outline the items of relief that are needed. So if you look at the last page of my O3 handout, and it's the same, which is on the enlarged board, I'll just walk the board around the blue numbers. Before I want to go there, let me just, let me start at the top of the page, which has the footprint. You will see, and the applicant has said this a number of times, when we build this six-unit townhouse development, we're not going to be as close to the neighbor's property. And that's true. But as you can see from panel 14, the footprint is much longer. And indeed, as you recall from the other testimony, it's not just a wall there. There are going to be four air conditioning units, there are going to be doors back there, and that part of the building is taller than what is there today. The applicant keeps on referring to the existing height of the building, but that's not the part of the existing building that's closest to the single-family homes. That's furthest away from the single-family homes. So the first thing I want to say is that even though the setback is being increased from what exists today, what is being replaced with is longer and taller, and in my opinion, has a greater negative impact in terms of light air and open space. The other thing, if you look at the bottom part of the panel, and this is, I guess, the simplest way to put this application, there are six units. One of the units is highly irregular, triangular in shape. But in light gray is the driveway, and the darker gray is the building that's proposed, including the porches. This is a proposal where more of the footprint of the building is outside of the eligible building envelope that's in. I don't know if I've ever seen this in my career, but here is someone asking for variances where it's almost, while it could be used for a single-family use, here's an application where the footprint of the building, and let's forget the height for the moment, the footprint is more outside of the eligible area than inside. Let me walk through the numbers of the variances that are needed. On the western side, the applicant is proposing five feet setback in lieu of the 40-foot minimum. That's a significant difference from what is required. And your ordinance does define that as the rear yard. Number two--
I'm sorry, is it side or rear?
That was a rear yard. Number two is the, because this is a corner lot by definition, this has two front yards that are required to be 20 feet. There is a porch exception to the front yard. It is 12 feet, so we allow a nice, open porch to come closer than 20 feet. In this case, the proposal is 5.5 feet. And this is a very visible part of this project because it's across from a public park. Number three talks about the diameter, and there is a, the lot is too small by itself because of the circle it's supposed to be in, once you attract setbacks. So there's relief there, but I'll grant you that. It's an existing lot, and the adjacent lots are built, so we're not going to get any more land. So that's one variance that might be justified. Number four talks about a building coverage. The applicant is proposing 52.4% building coverage in lieu of the maximum 20%. That's big-time change, more than two times. And the interesting thing about that variance is the building coverage is a percentage of the lot area. It has nothing to do with the shape of the property. Yes, this is a triangle, but the building coverage is just proportional to the square footage. It has nothing to do with the shape of the property. Number five talks about a 60.2% lot coverage in lieu of the 40%. Again, this is a, simply a multiplier times the square footage of the lot, has nothing to do with the shape of the property, and the applicant is greatly exceeding the 40% maximum. There is a height. Originally, it was 38.5, and it's now a C variance, the maximum C variance you can get, but it is a height variance that is needed, and it is a three-and-a-half-story building. And again, when I say that this doesn't look like a single-family home, I don't think there's another building that looks like this that you could view from Ocean Avenue. Number eight talks about the FAR, and this is another, I guess the technical word is code buster. The maximum permitted is 50% here, respective of the shape of the lot. The applicant is proposing 117% FAR. And keep in mind, the issue of FAR and building coverage were of concern to the planning board when they drafted 2016 reexamination report and master plan update. That was an important feature. Number nine talks about 12 parking spaces in lieu of the 14 that were required. The applicant's planner said that one of the reasons that this should be approved, it had conforming parking. It doesn't have conforming parking. This is a residential site improvement standards requirement. And the master plan talks about what everybody knows in the summertime, there ain't enough parking around. Parking is at a premium. So if you say that there are so many parking spaces on the street, there are, but the master plan acknowledges that parking is in short supply for a community like this. And when I talked about the porch of 5.5 feet in lieu of 12, that's for one of the buildings. Both buildings intrude by the porch. Both setbacks are five feet in lieu of 20. Excuse me, the, one porch is what, 5.5 in lieu of 12? The second building doesn't have a porch on it that fronts on River Avenue, but that has a five-foot setback in lieu of the 20-foot required. Major relief, and in the most visible part of the property, the part that's viewed, that you can see both from Ocean Avenue and from the public park. You get to the corner of the property, there's a porch there, this circular porch, 5.6 feet in lieu of 12. You get to the front, the other front of the property on Second Avenue, and there, while the porches are conforming, the body of the building doesn't conform to the 20-foot minimum requirement. So, and I'll repeat the issue of density. This zone permits a maximum density, forget that it's a corner lot, of 5.8 units. This is proposing 17.4. So there are a lot of variances that are being requested. They are not de minimis variances. They are substantial in scope. And if you look at the footprint, this applicant is kind of ignoring what the building envelope is supposed to be. More of the building is outside the envelope than in the envelope. And I've never seen this in my career, something that is, in my opinion, that offensive to light air and open space, what was being anticipated or required in the zoning ordinance. Now, as you're aware, the-- let me just look for one other note, excuse me. The applicant bears the burden of proof, and you heard the testimony of the applicant's engineer slash planner. And I just want to summarize it and to bring it back to your minds. He said that this is a great regable, which is irrelevant. He said that aesthetics are important, and the architect says this is going to look like two single-family houses. He said that, he emphasized the binary choice. You want the, this hotel? And then he went through a scenario as if this were 34 single-family dwellings. They're not. There isn't the same parking requirement, there isn't the same square footage per unit. He said that this would, was purpose A and encouraged the promotion of general welfare. Well, that purpose was cited as supporting-- Well, that purpose was cited as supporting the current zoning. He talked about, I believe, more efficient use of land. He talked about aesthetics. In my opinion, these municipal land use law purposes were employed by the planning board and by the governing body in requiring the zoning to be single-family residential. There is this choice that's being presented. Do you want to keep the hotel, or you want six units? A or B? That has nothing to do with, in my opinion, the statutory criteria. That's the way the applicant is framing the application. First of all, if the seasonal hotel stays, in my opinion, there is no detriment. It's been there for a long time. The area has matured, has developed nicely. My clients have houses that are right next door, and they're happy with the existing conditions. So in my opinion, this, I guess, implied benefit of getting rid of this seasonal hotel, which I guess serves people that are less than millionaires, the answer is there's no detriment to that. And other municipalities would look at this potentially as a historic district, something to take pride in because this was the history of the municipality. This municipality doesn't choose to do that, but I see no detriment, other than the paper detriment, that it is nonconforming. Whether you want the hotel there or not, when you approve this application or not, the applicant still has to meet the negative criteria. And first of all, the testimony from the appraiser talked about highest and best use. In my opinion, that has no place in judging whether the variance is needed or not. If the municipality were going to acquire this as park plan, then you hire an appraiser and get what the highest and best use is, because that's the fair cost of compensation. The owner deserves compensation. But zoning does not, in my opinion, ensure that someone makes a profit. Someone could have a nonconforming restaurant in a resident, single-family zone. It could be very valuable because it's a famous restaurant. That has nothing to do with granting variances. Variances have to do with the impact on the land use plan and the area. In my opinion, the applicant, first of all, fails in the proofs because this does substantially impair the intent purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. The governing body and the planning board knew that there were multifamily in the area. The policy is to discourage new multifamily. The policy is to preserve the single-family character. This building, in my opinion, is not going to look like two single-family houses. First of all, by right, you would, and by density, you'd get one house on this property. The other offensive part of this is the fact that there are so many variances, and they are so major. The variances in terms of floor area ratio and the use itself are D variances. The multifamily use is a Vennigie case variance. It's a use that's not permitted, and the applicant is starting from scratch. They're not converting the building to multifamily units. The applicant is sweeping the property clean. And the hardest burden is to meet the Vennigie proofs. This is directly inconsistent with the master plan, which says you don't want multifamily. And the master plan recommended, on the land use plan map, this property was colored red rather than multifamily. So the planning board knew that it was a hotel, and the governing body knew that it was hotel, and retaining the zoning. A number of the variances I mentioned are unrelated to the shape of the property. Building coverage, floor area ratio, have nothing to do with the shape of the property. If you look at the number of variances, the fact that this is in a prominent location that is very visible to the public, that the applicant is taking advantage of the applicant is ignoring the intent of the ordinance, which is the eligible building envelope area. More of this building is outside of the building envelope that's permitted, and it is taller than permitted. One could say is, the other issue is, these dimensional standards that are in the ordinance, R-75 ordinance, were intended for a single-family house. If you comply with the standards for a single-family house, there's no negative detriment. But you can't say, "I meet the side yard standard or the front yard standard" with a building that is taller than would normally permit it. A logical person would say, "Well, we need greater setbacks." If you're going to go taller and have a bigger building by floor area ratio or building permit, you're not wedded to the standards for a single-family house. Logic tells me you need greater setbacks because it's bigger. So the fact that the owner wants a certain amount of dollars, in my opinion, is irrelevant. There's been discussion about the value of the appraisal of the property, and that would be potentially important if the applicant were alleging that this property is inutile, that the zoning does not permit any reasonable use of this property. The zoning permits a single-family house that has a certain value. None of the testimony of the applicant's planner alleged that this property was inutile. So this evidence has cropped up about what's the value of the property, and is that important? That's important if the applicant is making an application that the zoning is so restrictive, there's no reasonable use of the property. In my opinion, that isn't even what the applicant is proposing through his planner. So is the applicant's burden of proof? As I listen to the testimony, the applicant has not met that burden. The applicant has this binary choice, and this is denied. The applicant certainly has a right to come back for five units, three units, two units, those are different types of application. He has the right to reapply. But this is not a bar, like a bizarre horse trading. This is the applicant's case. The applicant presented evidence. In my opinion, it doesn't meet the statutory criteria, and I think the board has only one choice, which is simply to deny the application.
Mr. Stech, just a couple of follow-up. You talked about the extreme nature of the bulk variances that are associated with the application, correct?
Yes.
You also talked about, I guess, the D variances associated, right? For the multifamily, for the FAR. Any other D variances? I know they said they would reduce the height by a foot or a feet-six inches or something to avoid the D and make it a C.
Yes.
Okay. Now, what about the the proposal to have three-and-a-half stories where two-and-a-half stories is permitted? Is that D is a C?
Well, it's a little bit unclear, but let me be the most practical way to do this. The municipal land use law says that if you cede the height by 10% or 10 feet, that's a D6 variance. And why do they pick 10 feet? Because that's a story. So functionally, this building is a story taller than it should be. And that, looked at from that fashion, it's a D6 variance.
Okay. You mentioned a couple of times certain of the variances, certain of the more egregious variances, like FAR, lot coverage, the coverage variances. FAR, of course, being D, coverage being C, bulk variances. And you referenced a couple of times that those variances are unrelated to the shape of the property. Can you just explain what you mean by that?
Well, the applicant is suggesting that because of the irregular shape of the property, it is the basis for granting some kind of relief. And this is a corner lot. And a corner lot is not unusual in terms of your ordinance because your ordinance addresses corner lots, it's both got two front yards. The reason I brought up something like the FAR is almost threefold. FAR is neutral as to the shape of the property. It is a major variance. It requires five affirmative votes. And number three, the master plan says it's important. And the applicant is a code buster there. 50% maximum permitted, 117% proposed. That's not de minimis. That's more than twice the bulk. And again, you could say, "Oh, there's nice porches, and isn't this going to be the theme?" This size cluster of buildings on this lot, no one in their right mind, in my opinion, is going to drive down the street and say, "Oh, how nice are these two single-family homes?" They're not going to read that way, in my opinion. It's a combination of the size of them, the rapidity of the units, and the height.
And so for sort of simple guy like me, we're talking about those coverage variances and those FAR variances when you say it's unrelated to the shape of the property. Said another way, does that mean if they made the building smaller, those variances would become less egregious?
Yes, the starting point is the master plan says by density, they should have one unit. If you need 9,000 square feet for a corner lot. And that's the starting point. The applicant has offered you, has said, "I want five more units and I'm permitted." But the consequences of that are so severe, in my opinion, it is substantially detrimental to the public good and does substantially impair the intent purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance.
Let me ask you a question. You talked a lot about the number of variances, the extent, and all of that. Can you talk a little bit about the concept of a zone change? And your opinion as to whether what this board is being asked to do is tantamount to a zone change because the application is pretty much ignoring the existing zone?
I think that that's true. Again, we have a situation here where the rational basis for the zoning is from the master plan. The zoning is consistent. The governing body adopted zoning that is consistent with the master plan. There's clear language, "No more multifamily deuces." To go against 180 degrees, to go against, and again, I'll repeat the fact, the existing land use map and the master plan knew that this was a hotel. Yet they continued to zone it the way it is. To approve a project that is so disparate from what the standards are and what the master plan goals are, in my opinion, is, they're serving the governing body's authority.
And did the master plan even have language which said that single family, within the R-75 zone, single family continues to be encouraged?
Yes, without a doubt.
And you, last question. You mentioned the binary, there's been talk about a binary choice here, where the applicant has presented to the board that, I believe, that the board has two choices here, either the six units that are proposed or the existing seasonal hotel remains. Are there other choices?
There are a myriad of choices. There's one family that could, you know, the applicant has the right to come in for a smaller number of uses. The real choice, you can't assure that this hotel will stay there. No matter what you do, the applicant tomorrow, the owner tomorrow can go and get a demolition permit, tear it down. You have no say in that. That's not a variance issue. He has a right to do that. The real choice you have before you is to approve or deny this application for six units. That's what's being presented to you. That's your choice.
Okay. No further questions for us.
Thank you. Mr. Schaefer, would you mind if we took a quick break? And then we go to your cross. All right, so let's take a break for 10 minutes. We'll be back here at 9:00. And it goes back to Mr. Schaefer for a cross-examination of Mr. Schaefer.
Thank you. Mr. Stech, I just want to gain a little bit more information about yourself and/or your practice. You indicated that you have been, I believe, on your own for 20 years. Is that correct?
Yes.
Are you a single man shot, or you have multiple plans?
You're looking at the entire corporate office. In the past, I have had hired part-time people, but right now, you're looking at the entire corporate staff.
Okay, the entire staff.
Yes. I'm in.
Okay. I'm just trying to learn a few things. Set the ground for my next question. So for 20 years, you've been in the business, you indicated testifying on behalf of developers, neighboring groups in particular. Is that correct?
And municipalities.
And municipalities, okay. When you say neighboring groups, are they, those groups often objector groups?
Often.
And you're, from the research I've done, Mr. Stech, it appears that you predominantly testify more in North Jersey, is that correct?
Since I live in Maplewood and work in Maplewood, that is where many of my clients are. But I have, I've done work in, I have a job now in Wildwood. I'm in vine land, so I cover much of the state.
All right. And you consider yourself an expert who pays attention to details?
I consider myself an expert planning witness.
And your license was reinstated recently, April 1/15. Is that correct?
Yes, I neglected. I neglected to pay a fee, and it was promptly returned.
Well, you were also, well, more than just a fee. Did you not acknowledge that you testified while being on license?
I acknowledged that I did not know my license had lapsed. I acknowledged that I testified a number of occasions when my, although I didn't know it, my license had lapsed. But I also testified that when I discovered that my license had lapsed, I did not testify until the license, until I paid the fee and fine, and my license was reinstated.
All right, and you're reinstated as of tonight, correct?
Yes.
All right, now you're familiar with New Jersey Transit Corporation versus Mary Franco, MC Franco, North County Collision, Genesee Express, City of Hoboken, Weehawken, and Union.
Yes.
As a matter of fact, you were the principal planner in that matter, were you not?
I represented the property owner, yes. It was a valuation case.
Yes, and you had an opportunity to read the appellate division decision that arose out of that case?
I did it one time, yes.
Do you remember what their conclusions were regarding your testimony?
I don't specifically, but they I don't specifically recall, but they discounted my testimony whereupon, actually, the matter was settled. The New Jersey Transit decided to settle rather than further litigate the matter.
Well, they did more than discount your testimony, didn't they?
I don't recall the exact wording on it.
All right, do you remember that your testimony was legally inaccurate?
I don't, I don't remember the specific wording.
Would you like me to show you?
If you want to show it to me, you can. I don't remember the specific wording.
All right, how about that your testimony was also legally inadequate? Do you remember those terms from that case?
Again, I don't, I haven't, I didn't read the decision. Again, I don't, I haven't, I didn't read the decision at one time, I haven't read it recently. And that was a, an issue of an evaluation about the reasonable probability of variances granted, it was not a development application before any board.
Well, do you want me to go through the whole opinion across examination?
Well, I'm just telling you, but the-
Were the appellate division mentioned you, after it, actually incorrect about fifteen times, do you want me to go through the whole?
You can do whatever you want, but in my opinion, I, in my opinion, I did a credible job, and in fact, the client seemed to be satisfied because they settled rather than further litigation, and the applicant was, the property owner was very happy with the settlement.
Well, the fact of the matter is, the appellate division threw out your applicant's position, correct, and then they settled?
That's correct.
After the loss of the appellate division, your client settled, correct?
My client was happy, that's all I know.
Happy to be out of the litigation?
Happy with the award that he was given for the value of the property.
Now, you're paid to testify, when you testify for both the developers, municipality, groups, is that correct?
Generally, sometimes I'm stiffed, but the answer is generally, I'm paid for my testimony.
This is your sole occupation?
Yes.
And you've been being paid for the four nights that you've been here so far, correct?
Yes.
This is what you do for a living, correct?
Yes.
Now, you indicated that you studied some documents regarding Belmar prior to coming up with your testimony points or your testimony. Could you list for me what you reviewed in anticipation of your testimony and/or your conclusions?
Well, it was everything that was in the application file, and that was several months ago, but when I testified in my direct testimony, I referenced the current reexamination report and master plan that did review the two thousand and six reexamination report.
Uh, that's, all right, so that was the two thousand and sixteen report that you reviewed, correct?
Yes.
All right, did you review the C-4 redevelopment plan?
No, because this is not in a redevelopment area, so it's irrelevant.
All right, well, the question was yes or no, I just simply asked, did you review it?
I did because it was irrelevant, I did not review it because it was irrelevant to this project.
Do you consider things relevant to a project to have some understanding of the surrounding neighborhoods and their redevelopment prior to formulating your opinions regarding the bigger parcel?
Now, when you say redevelopment, do you mean formal designation of blight, or do you just mean people replacing buildings?
Uh, you know what, I'll jump on the latter, let you not the former, because Belmar has not, well, let me ask you this, are you familiar with any of the Belmar attempts at redevelopment for blight?
Uh, no, because it's irrelevant to this application.
How often have you gone to the Belmar beach in the last twenty-four months?
Once.
Now, was that to examine this property, was this for something outside of this property?
Uh, it was both to walk my dog and to examine the property.
All right, so you haven't been to Belmar on Fourth of July lately, have you?
Uh, no.
Can you name me five restaurants in Belmar?
Uh, I did not study the restaurants, so I can't name you offhand five restaurants.
Mr. Chairman, I would ask that snickering remarks by the gallery be limited to when they want to testify.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer.
Have you had any experience observing any of the rooming houses within the borough of Belmar and their operation within the next thirty-six months?
I've only examined the subject property.
Have you come in contact with any of the tenants of any of the rooming houses in the borough of Belmar within the last thirty-six months?
No.
Were you down in Belmar during or thereafter the Sandy storm of, I believe that was two thousand and fourteen?
Well, thank you. I was in, I've been in Belmar on several occasions, because I know someone in an adjacent municipality that I visit.
Can you describe any of the damage that was done on any particular streets, areas, or buildings in Belmar that resulted in the Sandy storm?
Uh, I did not inspect after Sandy.
In fact, you weren't here after Sandy, correct?
Uh, I actually drove much of the shore, like a month after the hurricane, to get a sense of what went on.
Did you talk to any of the surrounding neighbors, other than the two clients who have retained Mr. Brodsky?
Yes.
Who are they?
I don't know the name, but there was a woman at the first hearing I attended from the guard department condominiums across the street, who had a conversation with me.
Can you describe the multifamily uses within four hundred feet of this property?
Uh, I could refer to your planner's exhibit that I believe accurately shows them, and the master plan shows the same number of properties that are in multifamily use.
Does multifamily use predominate the area within four hundred feet of this property?
Uh, I, the issue of the four hundred-foot radius is an arbitrary standard, I don't, I cannot, I cannot give you the number about how many properties are multifamily within four hundred feet.
Do you know of what street the multifamilies either wane or become more intense along the beachfront of Belmar from first through eighteen?
They are accurately depicted as an existing land use map in the two thousand and sixteen master plan. In my opinion, that, um, that pattern showed existing multifamily use as accurate, in my opinion.
Now, your testimony said the area grew up around the White House, and therefore, there was no detriment for it to remain. Do you remember that testimony?
Uh, what I said was that the hotel has been here for a hundred years, and that there is obviously new construction in the area, which, in my opinion, was not, did not experience any detriment from the presence of the hotel.
And did you review any previous projects that occurred in Belmar, let's say, within the last twenty years within a block of the ocean?
No.
Are you familiar, then, do you recall Montego Hotel and Bar?
Uh, well, if I told you that I wasn't familiar with it, then I don't recall the Montego Hotel and Bar.
So you would have no idea as to its redevelopment, its effect on the north end of Belmar, and whether they appeared for this board or sought zone change?
I think I already answered that question.
All right, the answer is no, correct?
That's correct.
How about the Barclay Hotel, same question?
Um, so I just want to put my objection on the record, Mr. Kennedy, I'm waiting for the questioning that has to do with the property that forms the subject matter of this application. I don't think asking this witness or any witness what restaurants he's familiar with, or how often he goes to the beach, has any relevance to the issues that are before the board.
Well, I think I'm going to actually get to his testimony, but first, I want to know what he really knows or doesn't know about Belmar, how familiar he is with redevelopment structures, property, hotels, rooming houses, and whether, and then I'm going to get to positive effects and negative effects with him, and I can lay my foundation on.
All right, well, I'm gonna, the objections are noted for the record, I don't necessarily know that some of the questions are relevant to the application, so maybe you could move along?
I'll consolidate them.
Thank you.
Are you, do you have any familiarity with the redevelopments of Red Beach Bar, the Tropical Pub, the Bellar Play, and the Paris Bar?
Same objection. No.
How deep, are you familiar with how many petitions for a zone change have occurred before the mayor council in Belmar in the last ten years?
No.
Have you ever been inside the White House?
No.
Uh, I assume that you're not familiar with-
Oh, I want to clarify, in DC, yes, but not in Belmar.
Okay. Congratulations. Are you familiar with the, I assume by you not being familiar with any of the prior redevelopments that I spoke about on the ocean, you have no idea about the number of variance densities or bar values that they were granted, is that correct?
That's correct.
Are you familiar with how many police encounters occurred within the last five years at the White House?
No.
Do you find that important to look at?
No.
Better zoning alternative, you didn't think that was relevant?
Uh, that's relevant because it's the burden of the applicant, in my opinion, because this building is so oversized and so egregious in terms of the number and magnitude of the variances, that that is irrelevant to the merits of this application.
And you don't think that plays into general welfare of the community or the surrounding?
It may, but as I, it may in certain circumstances, but in my opinion, looking at the condition of the surrounding properties and the investment in those properties, there is no evidence, in my opinion, of any detrimental effect to the operation of this hotel.
How about first aid pools or aid pools in the last five years, did you determine how many of those occurred at the White House?
No.
Uh, you didn't do any traffic study or traffic count because, I assume you're not a traffic engineer?
Yeah, similar to your planner, I did not do those things.
Okay. Maybe I could ask Mr. Kennedy to give the witness an instruction on this yes or no question, give a yes or no answer, if he wants to elaborate his account some more detail.
Uh, we're not that formal, set the line.
What's the parking count for available parking on the White House property as existed?
Uh, there may be one space on it.
And from your perspective, is that adequate for the existence of the rooming house from a planning perspective?
Uh, if you were to start from scratch, it would not be adequate, but the rooming house has existed for many years without, the hotel has existed for many years without onsite parking, and part of the issue, it's a seasonal hotel, so it's quiet during the off-season. Uh, and it, the answer is, it's still in operation, so the lack of parking, while one would like onsite parking, is, appeared not to be a detriment to the area.
So let's ask you this, you have no idea as to what the spill of effect of that property is on parking in season, when it's actually open, correct?
I'm sure that there is a parking demand that has to rely on on-street parking.
Now, the proposal by the applicant, does it not ease the rental parking demand at that site?
If you were just to look at, well, during the off-season, no, but during the summer season, it is, it does improve if all these variances had just to do with parking.
Well, I'm just asking you about parking. Is parking a significant consideration in your evaluation of this property, both existing and proposed?
Well, first of all, you don't meet the required amount of parking, number one, and number two, it is a consideration, but viewing the number and magnitude of the variances sought and the nature of them as being D variances, in my opinion, it doesn't carry the day, the fact that there is going to be less of a parking demand during the summer season.
So are you basically saying to this court, it's no big deal, the parking element, because of these other factors that you're attempting to-
Objection, that's not what you said.
Interject? It's effectively irrelevant, is that what you're saying?
No, I didn't say that.
So how many, how many spots are being offered by the applicant?
Twelve.
And how many are needed?
Fourteen.
How many are onsite now, one?
One.
How many would be needed for thirty-four rooming, commercial rooming now?
Uh, I didn't calculate that, but it's clearly not as much per unit as townhouses.
Uh, would you say that two, so it's your testimony, perhaps, I don't know if the words are enough, but so the two parking deficit for six townhouses, is that worse than the parking condition currently?
During the in-season, it's worse, during the off-season, there's no, essentially no parking demand under the, for one or two spaces.
All right, so we can agree that it's a non-conforming use, the White House in its current condition, correct?
Yes.
From your breadth of knowledge of case law, planning municipal land use law, that structure is not necessarily limited to the use that it currently has, uh, rooming seasonal residence, is it?
I believe the applicant may, well, that's maybe a legal opinion, but the applicant can certainly extend the rental season from just seasonal.
Correct. Be year-round rooming house, correct?
Yes.
Uh, rooming houses turning to rehab facilities at times, okay?
I don't know of one offhand, but I, that's theoretically possible.
Uh, they can, uh, let's talk a little bit more about rooming houses. What is your knowledge and study in the field of rooming houses?
Well, I've represented applicants for rooming houses in the past, and that's my, my knowledge of it.
So when you represented applicants, you represented people saying, I want to build a rooming house?
Yes.
Okay. And did you learn of the benefits and risks of establishing a rooming house within township?
Well, in this case, there were great social benefits.
Did you recommend them to be within a block of the ocean, next to residential homes?
No, I didn't have a situation specifically like this, but I, I mean, you can, you can manufacture a lot of threats, like a single-family house can be a group home that some neighbors might be offended at, but if you have a right to do it, you have a right to do it. That's not the test of whether this application should be approved or not by making threats like that.
Well, they're not threats, Mr. Steck.
But the application here is to tear it down and to build six townhouses, that's the only thing before the board.
Yes, and to get rid of a rooming house, and to retire the rooming house license and the non-conforming rooming house use.
I believe it's a license as a hotel, not as a rooming house.
Okay.
So I'm not sure, if it's licensed as a hotel, you can't have rear, you can't have year-round occupancy under a hotel license.
How about, are you familiar with circumstances where rooming houses, trying to fill their rooms or their beds, they look for clientele such as persons released from incarceration?
Uh, that's, that's possible, I, that's not what this application is, but-
I understand, I'll put aside the aspect, you know, the debate about what this application may be, I'm just asking a question. About Section eight, uh, people who fill, oftentimes will be the subject of operators of rooming houses who fill their, their occupancies, are you familiar with that?
Uh, sometimes individuals that have a voucher, they're allowed, they have rights of any citizen, and, um, they can incur federal subsidies that cycle through the state, and that accomplishes a valuable public purpose.
You're also familiar with a law that towns cannot create ordinances that would bridge the rate of sex offenders to move into towns' homes for rooming houses, correct?
I'm not familiar with that law.
Are you familiar with rooming houses who become the repository of Megan's law offenders?
So I just want to object to the relevance of this line of questioning, I can't, I still can't figure out, and I'm trying, how that any of that is relevant to the issues, the significant issues before the board. You've got plenty of issues. I don't understand where the questioning is going, and I am objecting as to relevance, and it's, and it's absolutely inappropriate, irrelevant, and wasting time.
It's none of the three. If I was Mr. Brodsky, I'd want to stay away from these questions, like the third rail on the subway track, because that's what your existing property is, and that's what your existing property contains, and when we talk about better zoning alternatives and better conditions for the environment and the neighborhoods, that's exactly what we're talking about.
But better zoning alternative is not the standard of proof that is required and that is applicable to the analysis that the board has to conduct in deciding whether all of the D variances and the bulk variances that are before it are justified as a matter of law.
If this board adopts and grants- If this board adopts and grants the D-use variance, the bulk variances are subsumed into the grant of the use variance. So a lot of this verbally and talking round and round, I get it, they can be argued by the defense, I'm going to hard counter-attack, but it's certainly not relevant. Let me move on a little bit. Mr. Steck, in your little presentation, you had two variances, variances twelve and thirteen, what were that?
Twelve was the face of the house, is nineteen... There are two buildings that front on River Avenue, and the main wall of the building is closer than twenty feet to the front property line.
I'm talking about twelve and thirteen.
That's what I just said. The porches are conforming, but the faces of the buildings are too close to the front property line.
Right. But that's on Second Avenue, not on River Avenue.
So I'm... You want me to talk about River Avenue? I misunderstood you.
No. Let me rephrase, because I want to make sure you and I are on the same page. The way I interpret your page five is that you are listing twelve bulk variances, is that correct, or thirteen bulk variances?
Actually, there are fourteen if you include density.
Okay. So let's focus on number twelve and number thirteen, okay?
Okay.
The way I read it, it seems it says nineteen point seven foot in lieu of twenty, is that variance number thirteen?
Yes.
All right. And number twelve is nineteen point seven feet in lieu of twenty feet, is that correct?
Yes.
All right. So your testimony to this point is those are two variances need to add, correct?
I believe the applicant identified those in its testimony.
Are you familiar with the average front yard setback of the adjacent projects?
There is an averaging provision, but I believe those were identified by the applicant, and I... You know, if this applicant rises or falls on point three feet closer than permitted on Second Avenue, that's... That is the minimums. But the question is...
No, the question is that's... The question is, are you familiar?
There is an averaging...
The average setback?
There is an averaging provision.
All right. And did you take that into consideration when you determined variances twelve and thirteen on P five?
I believe I put them there because I think they were identified in the application.
No, I think you put them there because you thought it was a twenty-foot setback, and you didn't understand the absence of front yard setback to adjacent property. Is that correct?
Well, I put it there because it was one of the items of relief, and clearly, on River Avenue, not only the porches intrude, but the whole buildings intrude.
I didn't ask whether the dialogue was asked for a yes or no.
But you have to give him a little bit of flexibility, if not, I think they were asking a yes or no question, so the witness needs to expand a little within reason if that's allowed.
If it make you more comfortable, I'll reduce the number of variances from fourteen to thirteen.
No, I think it would be the twelve.
Twelve is the deep...
But I'm not a man of...
There is a use variance, and there's also a density variance.
And how about if I ask it this way? Would twelve and thirteen be inaccurate testimony given to the board?
In my opinion, I think if... I don't recall if the adjacent house was surveyed, but they... It may be that they do not constitute variances. In my opinion, the applicant is so close, that doesn't at all relate to the central issues, which are the use and the bulk of the two structures.
Are you familiar with the Kramer case out of Seeger?
I think it was a fairly old case, many years ago.
Yeah, well, you're familiar with the DC, and you kept saying the DC, so it sounds like you read a lot of the law relative to this kind of stuff. Are you familiar with Kramer?
I know the name of the case, I have not read it recently.
Do you know that in Kramer, Jackerson Seeger wanted a hotel not to be replaced by another hotel in a single-family zone? Are you familiar with that?
I don't recall those facts.
Well, Seeger is just down the street from Bellmar, right?
I believe there's a different zoning board there, there's a different municipality, a different governing body. In my opinion, that's irrelevant to the merits of this application.
Is it irrelevant that in Kramer that the hotel division authorized the rebuilding of a new hotel in a single-family zone to get rid of the old, dilapidated, aging rooming house?
Each case is on its own twists, or is on its own merits. There was a different zoning ordinance, a different master plan, a different municipality, in my opinion, other than the general legal principles, it is irrelevant to the merits of this case.
All right. Let me go through some of the footprints you left in the snow over the course of years testifying. Let's talk about some of your prior testimony about densities. Have you ever testified that a hundred and sixty or a one-point-six FAR density for apartments is applicable in a small-town environment such as Bellmar or Montville or some of the other towns that you... How about the village of Ridgewood, maybe?
I testified on a Mount Laurel project in Ridgewood that had a Mount Laurel component. It was the redevelopment of an automobile dealership close to the train station, and that's the one you're referring to.
That's the one. You proposed a FAR of a hundred and sixty percent, did you not?
Yes, there was a public purpose advanced by promoting low-income moderate income housing.
Yeah, you know what? That was pretty interesting how you did that. The testimony that you gave there, is that where you were... Was that the case? Were you recommending senior housing, or was this a different case than your senior housing?
That was not senior housing. That was market-rate family housing.
So that was the Dayton that you were representing, right?
That's correct.
Now, one of your theories you espoused in Dayton was Dayton will expand the housing choices currently available rather than duplicate elements of the existing housing stock. Do you remember that?
Yes.
Is it that what Mr. Merkler's application is doing, giving us a diverse housing choice as opposed to a single-family home?
Well, you want to propose multifamily housing, which is specifically discouraged in the master plan, and there is no public purpose associated like this as an incentive to provide low- and moderate-income housing. In fact, in this case, although it's seasonal housing, you're tending to exclude low- and moderate-income people.
Well, we're going to talk about what Mr. Steck has to say about low-income people, shortly. You have testified in small unit developments of eight units, six units, and you testified to the board that it would be of no consequence, it would be consequential and debraving to oppose low-income housing for such a small project. Have you not... Go through them.
I've been practicing for more than thirty years, and I... When I testify, I can't say that... Because I said something is true in one case is true in all cases. As they say, foolish consistency is the hobgoblin of little minds. In my opinion, each of these relates to the specifics of the site, what the master plan said, what the zoning ordinance says, what the use is on the property. You can spend all night going through all of the cases that I've been on, but in my opinion, what speaks to the board here are the facts of this situation and this neighborhood, this master plan, this zoning ordinance.
Can I move that there? I'm just going to find out about Mr. Steck a little bit more, and your principles, and what you have espoused, depending on the week and where you're testifying, that's all.
All right. So I got to object. I mean, every... You know, it's a standard, accepted, repeatedly reinforced, and affirmed legal principle under municipal land use law and its case law progeny in the state of New Jersey, that each zoning application stands on its own. And as Mr. Steck said, you know, it's misleading and unfair to question him about testimony he gave in other cases that were... Had different factual circumstances, different considerations, different zoning ordinance provisions, different master plans. And so I believe that it's irrelevant to the board's determination on this case, and Mr. Kennedy, I would ask that the board be so directing.
And I will also point out that that is abundantly true, that every application rests and fails, and or fails on its own merits, and we know that because sometimes we come to this board and say, "Hey, you gave my next-door neighbor offense," or "That wasn't compliant." "You gave my next-door guy down the street a pool for a second unit," and we always have to say that that is not relevant. So it is not relevant. Every fact, every application has a rest or fail on its own merits. So we're getting close to the witching hour, so Mr. Schreiber, can we get to the substance of your questions regarding this application?
Yes, sir.
What do we say the witching hour was? We said the witching hour was ten o'clock?
I think we said we'd look at the clock. Why don't we let Mr. Schreiber? Could you give us an idea about how long your cross will last?
Not... Twenty minutes.
Why don't we try to make it through Mr. Schreiber's cross, and then we'll... Can we get a commitment, remember, to at least make it to ten-thirty?
Okay.
Ten-thirty, no complaint. How's that sound?
All right, Mr. Schreiber, back after.
If I could ask the ground to be quiet, please, since we can...
Mr. Steck, do you believe that the sense of economic feasibility of a project is relevant to the board's determination?
If the applicant is alleging that there is extreme hardship because the zoning is confiscatory, it is relevant. In this case, it is not relevant.
Well, how familiar are you with real estate price, listing and sales prices within a borough of Bellmar less than twenty-four months?
I have not studied real estate prices because, in my opinion, it's irrelevant to the merits of this application.
You previously used, when you represented applicants as opposed to tonight, you used the term "economic engine," and I believe I've read that on multiple times on multiple applications. What is your definition of an economic engine?
Well, in a redevelopment area, for example, oftentimes, the uses permitted in the plan authorize greater density, different types of uses that encourage redevelopment.
Well, in Mendham, when you were trying to advocate for high-density apartments, you specifically testified that it wouldn't happen without high density, because that was the economic engine that would make the redevelopment successful, correct?
Can you tell me how many years ago that was? I can't remember this case.
It was September of twelve, about six and a half years ago.
And can you recall to me...
You represented Zenion Enterprises LLC, manager of applicant.
And what was the nature of the application?
You requested parking variance, you requested use variance.
I'm sorry, that's a number of years ago, and I don't remember the...
And interestingly, you did not advocate zone change in that application, as you were at the moment.
I'm not advocating a zone change. I'm saying that this is tandem... This variances are so at odds with the master plan and the zoning ordinance that it is tandem out to a zone change.
And in Mendham, when you represented, you were wearing Mr. DeFalto's hat. You didn't recommend to your client, "Let's go for a zone change for the mayor council." You took it on... You took it on as planner for applicant, and away you went with your economic engine testimony, did you not?
So I'm going to object again, Mr. Kennedy. I don't know where we're going. We can do this forever. I can bring Mr. Steck back, and we can spend the whole night talking about his many years of testimony, and... But I failed, and I'm prepared to do that if the board thinks that that's relevant. I don't, and so I don't see the relevance. I don't see... I understand that Mr. Schreiber does not want to talk about the merits of this case, because that's not a good topic for the applicant, but I don't think we should continue to waste the precious time.
Yeah, what I would do is, I would respectfully suggest that I think we can all take judicial notice of the fact that Mr. Steck has argued cases before, pro-development, anti-development, recommended sometimes, zone change is recommended sometimes, not a zone change. I think that doesn't make him a bad person, doesn't make him... Doesn't cause any issues. I think we should focus on this case and the merits of his testimony, and I think we should try to challenge him on some of the statements that he made regarding the client qualifications associated with this application. I get you've made your point that he's testified different positions in different towns, and let's focus on Bellmar.
All right. So, Mr. Kennedy, with due respect, I respectfully disagree, but I will abide by your instructions. So...
And your objection will be noted for the record. Thank you.
Thank you. So, Mr. Steck, your economic engine phrase, if a redevelopment is not viable or feasible, it does not occur, correct?
No, is that wrong?
I didn't say that. If a redevelopment proposal is not economically feasible or viable, it does not occur, correct?
Not always.
When, when something is not economically feasible or viable, from your knowledge, will a developer or someone go in and perhaps pursue non-feasibility, non-viable?
Developers occasionally go bankrupt, because they make bad judgments.
Okay. So, Pete, so anyone who might want to acquire the White House, perhaps, the only way to redevelop that property would be to do it feasibly or risk going bankrupt, correct?
There is a reasonable use of the property today. None of your witnesses, your planner did not testify that this was a case of extreme hardship. In my opinion, zoning variances are not there to assure that a developer makes money.
And if a developer doesn't make money and no one will touch a property, it falls into disrepair potentially, is that correct?
Not always.
Significant chance, though, correct?
Each case is on its own.
All right. So let me cut to the chase here, as an average typically. Is it your position that a single-family home on this lot is what, from a planner's perspective, you think should happen here?
Yes.
Do you... And what you've no economic studies, viability or feasibility studies to back that position as whether it's feasible or it's fantasy, then, correct?
In my opinion, the issues before the board are not the profitability of the owner or the developer. The issues are the public policies expressed by the planning board and the master plan and by the governing body in its own.
So your position, this should be a single-family home, and that's what redevelopment should be limited to?
My position is that the applicant has not demonstrated valid statutory reasons that would warrant the granting of this requested variance.
Would Ms. Hearn's plans not be a far more desirable aesthetic image than what exists now? now?
To me, there is... The facade is an elegant facade, but as I said before, no one is going to read this as two single-family dwellings.
What's the question? The question is, does the plan advance a more visually desirable environment than what exists now?
I can't conclude that because the proposed development is so out of character with the area and that the... While the current building is not in perfect maintenance, as you can see from the historic photographs, much of the historic integrity is still there in the front piece of the property, and there is no evidence that its current operation results in any detriment to the surrounding area.
So, what you're saying is you want it to go back to the postcard? If somebody will invest enough money to make it the postcard, a single-family house?
I didn't say that.
Okay. When you come over the bridge from Avon, how many times have you come over the bridge from Avon and taken a hard look at the White House?
For the purposes of this application, three times, but I've been in the area more times than that.
As a planner, what is your sense as to what gateway properties do for municipalities, townships, cities? Do they strive to have good gateway properties, good gateway business?
Many zoning ordinances and master plans can designate an area as a gateway property, and the zoning can implement that. This is not identified in the master plan as a gateway property.
How many properties have Delmar designated as gateway properties during its existence?
I can tell you that along Ocean Avenue, there... I don't recall any designated properties as gateways. The planning board can elect to do that. It has not chosen to do that.
When you read the 2016 master plan reexamination... 2016 reexamination, did you read page 11 that talks about multifamily residents, however, are still an important asset in the borough, particularly in the northeast section along Ocean Avenue, and allow a mix of uses, housing types, and a word village?
Yes, I read that. But it does not apply to this property.
So, your answer is that Delmar had no intentions of that theory applying to this property. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Or, Mr. Chairman, I think I am probably at a point where I need to either revisit some of my notes because there are sections, of course, I still have. I'm debating, do I yield to Mr. Middleton, or do we start making a determination on the hour? Because I would need about 10 minutes to retool parts of my thoughts.
And then I have one more witness that would be brief.
All right. I think it's getting pretty late, folks. I think we're all going to line up coming back here again. Have we talked about dates for the next meeting? Things available?
April has indicated that April 25th, there's three applications on. On May 28th, there's... I'm sorry, May 23rd, there's one application on, which is potentially settled and not happening. There's another under term, and a third under term, and then a fourth one that is confirming. Okay. And then on June 27th, so I think that people... Is it possible that they could be heard on May 23rd?
Is it possible we could be heard in April, and that goes up to us? I mean, we've done that before. We have other applications that might have finished, and we form one or two applications through a subsequent month, so that our application is not... I think we're getting very close to down to the wire here. For a special meeting, do you think we want to take...
Mr. Chairman, I would prefer you...
Yeah. I don't know what the board thinks. I would prefer to have a special meeting if we can do it and dedicate another reunion full meeting to this application.
That's our...
Does anybody have objection to trying to schedule a date in May for that? April?
Do we think that that's what we take, and then we're going to get to...
Nobody can predict that.
I understand that, but...
We have to hear this application through to its end. We might as well schedule it and get it done.
I think there's a strong probability that we're going to include and hopefully vote attending at Avon. Do you allow public comment across?
We don't know anything like that, so we'll just make a date no matter what it is today.
Yeah, is that acceptable to you, Mr. Kennedy, and April?
I'm sorry, but it is...
For some... Can we try to schedule a date? Yeah, we still have more testimony. We don't have...
Yeah, but I don't have my schedule. I don't want any... But you can work around May, but we have the issues of the special...
Well, could we do this, then? Could we say what we did last time? We're going to adjourn... What I would like to do or propose is that we adjourn this meeting, we carry it, and make an announcement during the next regular meeting, and it'll give us all a couple of days with our schedules to plan a special meeting in that.
So, I think your suggestion is that we carry this to the April 25th meeting without the need for any further public notice, with the understanding that it's not going to be heard on April 25th, but on that date we will establish the date when it will be heard.
That's what I... Does that sound reasonable to everybody?
It sounds reasonable, but maybe... Well, 25th is only two more weeks, but maybe we can all discuss between us as the potential dates that will be represented by Mr. Brodsky, myself, Mr. Steck, and Mr. Kennedy are available.
There's a lot of many parts to that. That's why I would think in two weeks we could figure that out.
That's what I hope.
Mr. Chair, my only concern with that, and I'm not suggesting I have a problem, but it sounds perfectly reasonable to me, except that if there are members in the pub... There are members in the public. So, if we do it in that fashion, then those members of the public then would have to appear on April 25th in order to find out when the special meeting is going to be?
Or they can call the board secretary.
It's also published on the website, I believe. There's several ways people from the public could find out about the next meeting.
I mean, the key is, and I understand what Mr. Brodsky's saying, and he's making a good point, but the key is if we leave here tonight, we have to give a date certain, or Mr. Schaefer will have to renotice, and we don't want to have to make him do that. So, we have to give a date certain so that legally, no further notice is required, and people are going to be more than welcome to come back on April 25th, knowing that we're not going to hear it, but that's the date that will be more formally established. I mean, I think Bill and Tim and I don't know that we can get any better than that. I just wanted to...
Right. I mean, we should be talking about a tentative date for board participation.
As well. I think everybody else has seen...
Right. And I think, can't we just, as far as the board goes, at least throw out one or two tentative dates? Because they could agree on a date, and then we don't have quorum. So, why don't we at least establish the 15 or the 22nd of May as dates that maybe aspire to choose, assuming that we would have quorum, and then let them fit in on those two dates? Because how are you going to do that offline? You're never going to coordinate all of us offline. We're here right now. We could say 15 or 22, I would think.
April 22nd, are those dates available?
We have 15 and the 22nd are available.
All of my people are available for the 22nd. Mr. Steck is unavailable on the 15th.
All right. How about the board members? Does anybody know their schedule on the 22nd?
I don't know. Our regular meeting is the 23rd.
And, Mr. Kennedy, you don't know your schedule?
I am.
With all due respect to you, Mr. Fitzgerald, I'd really just rather try to handle this through emails, things like that. So, if there's no other objections, I'd like to propose our plan where we'll announce a new meeting. I guess we'll adjourn... Mr. Kennedy, you have a much better words than...
No, I didn't. But I adjourned it to April 25th, 2019, with the understanding that there will be no further public notice, but with further understanding that it's actually... Only thing that's going to subsequently happen that night is we're going to establish the next hearing date for it. And we have to, in the meantime, April's going to coordinate offline with the board dates and availability and the meeting availability. Mr. Schaefer's office is going to coordinate with folks on this side of the room, their availability, and then we merge it and hopefully come up with a shooting date.
Okay.
I suggest that Mr. Schaefer coordinate with everybody a couple of dates that work for that, and then I can off of those dates report and see...
How about May?
We don't know Mr. Kennedy's schedule.
So, you don't want a back-to-back? I heard you might have a back-to-back.
We do, right?
Yeah. Mr. Brodsky?
I'm available, Mr. Steck.
Yeah, this is going to be impossible to do without everybody having their schedules and a couple of days.
Okay.
So, we can adjourn this?
And I apologize, it's an imperfect system, but it's one that will... So, Mr. Schaefer, are you okay to... Do you consent to extend the time frame within the board has to act? Thank you. And we'll adjourn this... I guess we should have a motion to adjourn this to April 25th, 2019, without the need for any further public notice.
Can I add that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Second amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Earl.
Thank you, Al Kiper.
Thank you. All right. If I could just ask the public to be quiet while we finish up some other business here. April, I don't remember the...